Record. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The date is March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. It's five oh one P M. And this is a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen specifically to discuss the F Y twenty-two budget. We're gonna go department by department. Before we do that, I do want to remind everyone that this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. And it is being video and audio recorded, so it will be replayed on Channel Nine. It will also be placed on YouTube in perpetuity. As always, there are three ways to participate. Either via email, phone, or via the Zoom link with the meeting ID and password on our agenda. And with that, I do wanna take a brief roll call. Selectmen Pacheco?
Present.
Are you participating remotely, sir?
I sure am.
Thank you. Selectmen Goulart?
Yes, and I'm remote.
Thank you. And Selectmen Zagrafos is present and also participating remotely? That was easy. And with that, I ask that everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible,
with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we, if it's okay, I'm just, I'm getting used to having a town administrator. Town accountant Laviolat and town administrator Mullen prepared some summary budget overview items. And I really wanna give them the floor before we get into the meat and potatoes of each departmental budget. If you wanna have the floor, gentlemen, and if there are any remarks or any figures that you'd like to point the board towards, please, you have the floor, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, and if I could share my screen, if that's okay?
Absolutely. You asked me, and I apologize.
No problem.
There you are.
Okay.
You may just take it.
Hey, I'm just gonna pull up. Hold on. I thought I had it. Okay. And so I like, I wanted to start. Oh, like really, we have and we've had a, actually an expenditure budget, or the draft of one for the last few weeks. But obviously, a budget is only good as its revenues behind it. All I can think, as Chris Laviolat, the town accountant, we spent our last week or so really looking at where we have been, like, and where we are in F Y twenty. And how, actually, where we are. I'm sorry, in F Y twenty-one is informing how we go forward into F Y twenty-two, but also taking a look back to the last five fiscal years as well. Like, and you can see on terms of our revenues that, oh, you know, everything starts with our property tax. Like, and one of the good things is as a highlight, the town has always places, I understand, that are really, like, proud, like, proud feature and actually, oh, you know, always having a significant levy capacity every year, like, and that will continue, oh, actually, with these preliminary numbers. Actually, looking, actually, more like the excess levy capacity that we had in our budget in F Y nineteen. But again, this is the start of the budget process. Oh, but knowing we have a capacity, hour and a half, almost just over a half a million dollar capacity is a very good thing. Other thing is, you'll know, in terms of where our revenues are to our expenditures. Going into the local receipts, in terms of reviewing, like, our local receipts, the variety of them with the town accountant, there were a few that, like, the license and permits revenue that were a one-time, were a one-time, oh, you know, kind of outlier. That going into F Y twenty-two, we wanted to make sure that we were working with real projections and as much real numbers as we have. So you can see that we downgraded that revenue stream from five hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars to four hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and eighty, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. That is based on actually ninety percent of a five-year average. So we tried to look back and use five-year trends and averages to help inform where we're going and how we're going in to F Y twenty-two. So based on those adjustments, you can see that just in terms of the local receipt revenues that we're projecting to go into F Y twenty-two at this point with just over ninety-three thousand dollars less than we were projecting in local receipt revenues a year ago. And I wanted to, you know, Chris and I both wanted to start the conversation with this information and then go forward from there. But in terms, then I wanna go generally down to cost drivers.
We move on. Can I ask you a quick question under the local receipts?
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you either.
No, that's fine.
But before we move on, I just wanted to ask, were there any other, were there any other lines that you and the town accountant had projected a decrease in besides licenses and permits, like a significant decrease in receipts?
The only, the only other downgrade, you can see it in investment income. And that is probably due to the low interest rates that, you know, the world has seen with COVID. So we did downgrade that, downgrade that projection from thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars to twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. That was the only other projection, but that was not actually as substantial of a hit, if you will. Oh, you know, when compared to the licensing, the licenses and permit revenue stream.
Thank you, sir.
Does anyone else have any questions on that at this point?
Nope.
Okay. Then going down, generally speaking, in terms of the cost drivers, and I think really this speaks to, you know, the financial discipline and the responsibility, the strong fiscal responsibility that the town has always had. But you can see really in terms of the cost drivers, general government, oh, you know, I'm actually decreased by about roughly forty thousand dollars from F Y twenty-two, from F Y twenty-one. Like, you will see as we get into the public safety budgets, like, there are actually rationales for that increase from three, basically, three point eight, three point eight million dollars to three point nine five million dollars. But you can see really, actually predominantly, the, the most, you know, significant of cost drivers going in to F Y twenty-two from F Y twenty-one in the education sphere. That, that includes an increase in assessment to the tune of, I think, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the D R assessment. There's a two hundred and, almost two hundred and forty thousand dollar assessment increase. And I believe this includes a new debt service coming on the books for Bristol Plymouth. And also, a sixty, almost a sixty-seven thousand dollar increase for Bristol Aggie. And again, this, oh, it actually also includes research charge for the Bristol Aggie Building Project base on the student enrollment that the town of Dayton has at Bristol Aggie. So, that being said, though, you can see how most everything else is actually pretty static. And, oh, you know, that, when you compare the twenty-three, the twenty-three, the twenty-three, two million dollars, like, in the operating budget to our expenses, oh, I'm sorry, our revenues, oh, you know, the variance is about five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, like, once you factor everything else in, that comes up with our excess levy capacity. So we are actually starting this in a good position. However, this process is just, at the beginning, these are initial numbers. Oh, and at this point, what I envision potentially is over, like, actually starting tonight, possibly tomorrow night and going in to the first Selectmen's meeting in April. And we will have the next few weeks actually to finalize and solidify everything. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris. And Chris, I'm not sure if you have anything else to add?
So, one of the things that, that Mike and I discussed today, Mike, can you move down to the, to the local revenue section there for a second? Okay, so other available funds, one of the things I wanted to bring to the board's attention was that we're gonna level fund the contribution from the ambulance receipts reserve fund right now. But Mike and I, or especially me, I guess, I'm going to look at, I'm gonna do a ten-year look back at the activity in the ambulance receipts reserve, i.e., I'm gonna start from effectively retained earnings in that fund. Look at what revenue has been on an annual basis, and then look at what the contribution back to the, to the general fund budget has been. And then, as you all might be familiar with, if there's any money left over in the ambulance budget that isn't encumbered, we return that difference between the contribution and what's left over back to the ambulance fund. So there is a, there is a return to the ambulance fund in most instances at the end of the fiscal year. We, we're concerned going forward, even though there isn't anything definitive in a capital plan right now, we did have a conversation with Chief McGee today. And it looks like he'll be looking to replace one ambulance in fiscal twenty, sorry, start the process of replacing an ambulance in fiscal twenty-three, i.e., he'll be looking for funding in fiscal twenty-three, but the ambulance not to be paid for until fiscal twenty-four. And he's currently looking for a, a new engine that he'll be coming to the board and to the finance committee, I believe, for fall town meeting. We have some different options that we're considering in terms of financing that. Some of that financing part of it may come from ambulance, from the ambulance fund in the form of a down payment. And the rest of the financing to either be done through a lease purchase agreement or potentially some temporary borrowing. The state now has some, some interesting rules or some, some interesting alternatives that didn't exist before for equipment. Typically, a ban upon anticipation note was only good for five years, and now you can borrow up to ten years on a bond anticipation note. This leaves us with not having to come up with additional borrowing costs by going out to the bond market. Another alternative is the State House Loan Program. Again, almost no borrowing costs involved at all. Sometimes the interest rate's a little higher, but the deal's a little better in terms of future cost or future borrowing costs. So that's typically, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna need about a week to get my, get my act in order relative to the ambulance receipts reserve fund and provide you a deeper analogy, you know, sort of do a deep dive on, on what's amenable and how much we think we can actually take without severely impacting that fund on a go-forward basis.
So I just wanted to make two quick comments. One was to town accountant Laviolat, you may just wanna pay attention to, we changed how the bills were collected. Selectmen Goulart and I were on the board at the time. This was a little bit prior to when Selectmen Pacheco had joined us. But we went from a third-party vendor to in-house, and that was when we had hired Ms. Rebecca Moss to be sort of the office manager slash billing assistant. So you may wanna, you may see some differences after we hired her and went back to in-house. And the other thing I wanted to ask was, and this is a general question, either for the town accountant, probably more for Mr. Mullen. Do we know when the school representatives from the schools plan to come and speak to either us? Maybe it's just the finance committee, the Board of Selectmen will be present, and we can ask questions. I always support the education budget, and I plan to this fiscal year as well. But I do have serious questions about the increases, and I totally accept your justifications. I obviously don't have everything in front of me, but I do wanna get some more information on whether or not if the high school assessment has gone up, because my understanding is there are less and less students there every year. So I do want to gather some facts. Do we have any information on if they're just going to attend the finance committee meeting, and we will be there and able to ask them questions? Do you know?
Yes, my understanding, but, oh, eleven days into it, is that they typically do attend FinCom, but I also understand they do, are actually involved, and they do typically meet with the Board of Selectmen as well. So I'm happy either, oh, at the meeting on the fourteenth, or, or if the board does have a meeting between, actually, now and then as a special meeting, we can make sure that happens.
And before we make any decisions, do my colleagues want to meet separately? Are you okay with just being able to ask your questions during the finance committee meeting? I'll leave this up to the board.
I don't mean, I don't mind meeting separately.
Me too, Selectmen Pacheco. Selectmen Goulart, you might still be here, so.
The meeting that Mike and I had with Dr. Azar and Paul Kitchen, they, there's still some things up in the air. The total increase, and it's all grades, it's just not the high school, is around, I think he said, wasn't, Mike, didn't he say it was somewhere around like one percent? But there's some other things you need to know about. So brace yourself. They anticipate using some additional money out of their E and D, because they've got some additional money in there. About a hundred and fifty thousand. They had estimated the transportation reimbursement at eight hundred and twenty-five thousand when they did the calculations. They are now saying they're guessing it's gonna be around nine, nine hundred and eighty thousand. The transportation adjustment from E and D was listed as two hundred and twenty-five thousand, but that offset is actually seventy thousand. Some other things you need to be aware of is that their E and D is at two point two million. There, they anticipate, anticipate they might get up to an additional eight hundred thousand dollars from the feds in July. They are going out, or they're already out to bid. I get quotations on resurfacing tennis courts. They have a quote of fifty-eight thousand to refurbish, plus twenty percent contingency, to re-surface five courts. They wanna do track improvements, which includes replacing the, I'll call it the top coat. Also, once that's up, there's drainage work, there's reconditioning, the area where the broad, the approach to the broad jump and all this. So this is all stuff that's coming. Another thing they asked about was, did we think that the town of Dayton would be amenable to them having a capital account? Like, we have a stabilization and a capital stabilization. What I said to them was, but remember, if that gets set up, that's less, that's some of the money from E and D that we would normally get to reduce the cost that they would be looking to put into the capital account. Now, the whole thing is, that capital account would be obviously under the control of the school committee once set up. In response to whether or not I thought the town of Dayton voters would be amenable to something like this, because I believe it would have to be a special warrant article. My response was, well, first of all, you gotta make sure that if you're going to do that and you say you need X dollars to do something, you better spend the money on what you say you spend it on and not peripherals like, you know, example, remember, if we buy a cruiser and there's some money left over, one time they wanted to buy shotguns or rifles or something, and the answer was, no, no, that isn't part of it. So it might be something worth considering, but it really is gonna depend on what they have in mind for capital projects. Because if these capital projects are very large, I would think the towns are gonna push back and say, absolutely not. If you want a project of that size, meaning dollars, no, it's gonna come to the towns for a vote. So I don't know how much money they're looking about, but as I said, if they have a capital account in addition to what they have in E and D, anything over the five percent currently under statutory regulations, that anything over five percent of the previous year's budget has to be used to reduce the assessments in the member towns. They're over the five percent, and they have a capital account. They might go to put that in. I don't really know how this is all gonna work out, but this is some of the stuff we talked about.
But it's so fun, Selectmen Goulart. So do, are we in agreement? And I'm, I'm basically just asking this to kinda get the D R budget part out of the way. We'll still have to talk about Bristol Plymouth, we'll still talk about Bristol Aggie tonight. But can we take, I will entertain motions if the board is amenable to take the D R regional school districts portion of the Education Three Hundred budget under advisement until such time that we can meet with them?
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I think a separate meeting is a good idea, because they could probably further expand on these numbers that were estimates when Mike and I met with them, and also more on that capital account.
And thank you, Selectmen Goulart and Town Administrator Mullen, for meeting with them and reporting back. I appreciate that. Hearing no further discussion, Selectmen Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Town Administrator Mullen, I apologize for our trip down the scenic route. Did you have anything else, or did Mr. Laviolat have anything else just in regards to the budget overview that you wanted to highlight for us tonight? And if you don't mind, and if the board is amenable, and if it's not too burdensome for you, Town Administrator Mullen, do you mind sharing your screen so that people watching the meeting, who may not have the budget in front of them, are able to follow along, if it's not too much?
No, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Just, I just wanna get this into a proper Zoom. No pun intended format.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Selectmen Goulart.
Just a request, Mr. Mullen, when you have a chance, could you email to the board the sheets you showed earlier so that we will actually have them? I wanna print them and put them in my budget book, so I can refer back to them.
Yes, I absolutely will.
Thank you.
Selectmen Goulart, and I will share my screen, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, your budget overview sheets, Mr. Mullen, were a little bit updated from mine. So I'm not sure I got to denote everything, so I would also love an updated copy.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Mullen, Mike?
Yes.
Did you send that to all of us today?
I guess I did. You should have that, and I can resend it as well, at one thirty-nine P M.
Oh, that's why I didn't get it. Sorry.
Nope, that's fine.
I got the email, but I didn't, like, I didn't have time to get the sheets. I apologize. So I can print my own at home, sir. I'm good.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are we skipping item number three?
I don't have the agenda in front of me. Do you mind reading it?
It's the recommendation from the pandemic reopening task force?
Can we, yes, can we do that first, if that's okay, Mr. Mullen, before we get into the departmental budgets? Thank you, Selectmen Pacheco.
Yes, I absolutely will. Just let me pull up that summary as well. So, so yesterday, the, the pandemic, the pandemic reopening task force met. And we wanted to actually take a moment to share the recommendations that came out of the meeting. Based on the advice of the, of the health agent, the recommendation, the recommendation still stands to return to, to return to, to return to, excuse me, to return to in-person meetings tomorrow night for the Board of Selectmen at Old Town Hall and to continue on the path to reopening Town Hall on, on the fifth of April. The red designation, actually, that was designated to Dayton the end of last week. Like, it does actually, it does center on one cluster that has, that has been contained. And as part of the meeting, and the recommendation that came forward from the task force, the building commissioner, he did say he is still planning on an April fifth reopening at Town Hall. And that will, and that reopening will either be in full or by appointment. And the construction of many aspects of Town Halls and the first floor construction will be ongoing. However, the most invasive part of the construction that will have an impact to the public, that will be complete by April fifth. So that won't impact the reopening of Town Hall. So that is, oh, that is a summary from the meeting. And the recommendation is to continue with the return, excuse me, with the return to in-person meetings at Old Town, at Old Town Hall and to continue on the path to reopening Town Hall, beginning on April fifth, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. And I believe the Board of Selectmen voted to, so this is already covered by a vote to have our meeting in person and continue in person. So I don't believe any action is required unless the board's not amenable to that. I'm okay with it. I'm going to wear my mask during the meeting. How do my colleagues feel?
I'm okay with it. I had my second shot.
Lucky. Selectmen Goulart?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay. Is that okay, Mr. Mullen? We're good for tomorrow for in-person. And again, we, we had discussed as a board that every individual board committee commission needs to make that decision for themselves. But I feel comfortable going with the recommendation of the pandemic task force on this. Anything else? We're good on this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Selectmen Pacheco, since you have the agenda up, sir, is there anything else I'm missing before we get into the budgets?
No, we're all set. Now is the budget.
Thank you. I appreciate you keeping me on track. Okay. So do we wanna start with, I don't wanna, I don't wanna conduct the whole meeting, so I really want to throw each section over to one of my colleagues. So this is a lengthy one. Selectmen Goulart or Selectmen Pacheco, do you want to sort of conduct this portion of the budget review?
Sure, I don't mind. So the first one is the count, it's one thirteen, it's the town meetings. And what is being asked is forty-two hundred, and that's level funding.
Yeah, and we approved that one on the tenth.
Did we?
Yes.
We already acted, okay.
Okay.
So if I may.
Of course.
Selectmen Pacheco, if you read them, I've got my pages here that I wrote on that night, so I'll know which ones we can skip, okay?
Okay, so the next one is one fourteen, it's the moderator?
Yes, we approved it. Let me back up. So for the people listening to this, the Board of Selectmen approved Department one thirteen, town meeting at forty-two hundred dollars. Department one fourteen, moderator, Board of Selectmen approved five hundred dollars on March the tenth.
Okay, the next account, which I know was not approved yet, is one twenty-two, it's the Board of Selectmen. And I had asked a question the last time this came up, was did we get the budget from the Human Rights Committee or Commission?
I, I never received it. Town accountant Laviolat or Town Administrator Mullen, it just may not have been sent to me directly. Did you?
No, I wouldn't even know who would, I don't even know who's on the Human Rights Committee that would even have submitted me one.
Yes, it would, it would have been Sean Cassidy. Sorry about the dog. It would have been Sean Cassidy, and I spoke to him, he said he, he sent it to Brett once and that he would, he would resubmit it again.
He didn't receive anything.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get rid of my dogs, and give me a break.
She's protesting the Tuesday meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Of course.
Mike, before you, before you- Uh Mike, before you, before you continues making changes right now, um if it's okay, Mike, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the um the Board of Selectmen recommendations to the the proposed master budget tab. It will update, it should update your worksheets in real time.
Oh, great.
If you allow me to do that, I'll 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 update uh from the master tab, okay?
That's perfect, Chris. Thank you.
Look at this teamwork. I love this. Um and then the other thing was, Mrs. Brady, did we we needed to also think about not having the Trails Committee budget as part of this as well? It looks like it's highlighted, which is good.
Yep.
So it looks like we just have a little bit of uncertainty in the requests from one of our other committees. While we're waiting, Town Administrator Mullen or Town Accountant Lavialette, or I'm happy to as well, do we want to highlight anything from the notes?
All right, um.
You know.
Mr. Chairman, which are you talking um the notes to the right of the budget right now as you're seeing them on the Selectmen's tab?
Yeah, I I can apprise the public. So five, line five, it's like hard to see, but line five, ten, under account one twenty-two Board of Selectmen, that's the standard two percent increase. Um and it was, you know, we did uh performance evaluations, um so that is justified. Uh there was also um for the administrative assistant, so Mrs. Kirwin's position, um line five, one, 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 that increased because of uh a credit for service. Uh Mrs. Kirwin is a grade six. She got credit for her service in her uh previous municipality that she had worked in. There was a two percent increase um for her performance evaluation. And then five additional hours for thirty-five hours per week total. Um as we all know, Mrs. Kirwin is um also the uh website administrator. So that work has picked up um as people have needed their websites updated, especially during the pandemic. A lot of the Zoom meeting coordination um has fallen under Mrs. Kirwin. And as we all know, we're going to try to continue the hybrid uh meetings well into the future. Um so Mrs. Kirwin will still be needed to coordinate those Zoom meetings. Um am I missing anything?
I don't think so, no.
And then there was increased paper purchasing under office supplies. Selectman Pacheco, you have the floor, sir. You can continue. Sorry.
Okay, so I I do have a question on five, one, 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 one. That's not that's Lee Ann Kirwin, right? That's or is that Karen?
No, that's 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 Mrs. Kirwin's physician.
Okay, I'm I don't have a question on that then. I'm all set. So the total budget that we're looking for, well, I don't think we can resolve this tonight because we don't have the human rights. How do you feel about this, Mr. Chairman? Should we vote on this and then add uh or discuss the Human Rights Commission's budget at another meeting?
I think if we have to meet with the, if we're hoping that we, this is just my one opinion.
Yep.
If we're thinking we're going to meet with the school district possibly next week, then I think that we have some time to maybe get that information from Chairman Cassidy um and maybe able to fill in those blanks. So I feel comfortable if we want to star this one um and maybe hold on it till we have that missing piece of the puzzle, then I think that's no harm, no foul, Mr. Mullen.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. So I will entertain motions to take uh budget uh account number one twenty-two Board of Selectmen under advisement until our next meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
So the next budget item is the Town Administrator. It's account number one twenty-four. Total budget requested is one seventy-two hundred seventy thousand one hundred and seventy-seven cents. The Town Administrator is uh recommending one hundred and sixty-four dollars and nine hundred dollars and seventy-seven cents. Kind of think of.
Yeah, the difference was in terms of the salary, Mr. Pacheco, because the other contract actually came in at a lower than anticipated rate.
Okay.
But when we drafted this Selectman Pacheco, uh Mrs. Brady and Mrs. Kirwin and myself, we really only had the one hundred twenty-five thousand dollar figure that originally got approved by voters at the town meeting several years ago. Um and then when we negotiated the contract, I went back and changed it to match um what was negotiated.
I thought, uh and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought uh the salary is going to be increased July for us from one twenty to one twenty-five. Am I wrong about that?
Okay, no, I think it's prorated to July first and then the one hundred twenty thousand starts that first first full year, I guess we'll call it. Am I correct? I usually have a bad memory about these things.
Yes, yes, that is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the increase for this budget from last year is actually only two thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred, is that roughly?
That's correct.
Right?
If we, if we adopt uh the recommendations of the Town Administrator. Am I correct?
Yes.
So uh we'll entertain, I can, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the Town Administrator's budget of one hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred dollars and seventy-seven cents.
So moved.
I'll, I'll, I'm not chairman, so I'll second that.
I love this. So much less work. Um so we have a motion in a second. Um and again, I just went off of, so Town Administrator Mullen had not started yet. Um we wanted to make recommendations and so I just went based off the contract. So I'm obviously going to support it. Um the lower figure, which we love. Uh any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Uh the next item is the Finance Committee, one thirty-one. Did we approve that already, Miss Gulart?
No, it's on hold.
Okay. Uh that is level funding. Are there any questions?
What are we holding for? Does anyone recall? I'm sorry.
There was no departmental request and we were waiting to see if we got anything. And since we haven't, um I think we're we're level funded.
Yeah, I feel like if they, my just personal opinion is I think the Chairman of the Finance Committee has all of our personal contact information. I just believe like if there was something that they needed, I feel like they would have reached out and and they didn't. So I I agree with you, Selectman Gulart.
Uh Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Finance Committee uh budget for FY twenty-two at four thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars with no increase.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Gulart, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next budget is one thirty-two, it's the reserve fund. Am I correct that uh we're not asking anything to be put into reserve fund?
No.
My second question would be the fifty thousand that we had in reserve fund before, which we haven't spent any. Does that remain in that budget?
Um i- i- if we don't spend it this year, it'll close out to free cash, but we've got to have money in reserve. We don't have money in reserve and something comes up, we've got, we've got no place to go without a town meeting.
So several things have actually, so this, this is the thing that's um a little bit tricky is that of the budget expended, that only goes through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And so since that date, Selectman Pacheco, I believe several requests were made of the Finance Committee to use the reserve fund. I know one was approved. I I can't recall it. It was something related to personnel. I made one to replenish the tuition reimbursement account. They haven't acted on that. And then I did believe, I do believe they approved a transfer into some account relative to Forest Hills Estates. So there, so since this has been printed and calculated, there have been expenses out of that account.
Okay, I'll make a motion then uh for account number one thirty-two reserve fund that uh we appropriate or we ask that fifty thousand, we approved the budget of fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next item is one thirty-five Town, account number one thirty-five Town Accountant. And since we have the Town Accountant here, maybe perhaps he can go over that budget with us.
So um what you'll see there, um the increase to my salary is based on contract and it's exactly a two percent increase. The recommendation or my rec, my request for salary for the Assistant Town Accountant is based on uh a new person taking over for Linder McCarron, who just retired last week. That is the starting salary based on the on the current union contract. Uh the new person will come in at a grade six and I'm sorry, I can't see the step number there on Mike's screen, but I'll 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 assume it's a step one.
Yep.
Okay. Um and so we've budgeted right to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two for that position. Overtime, I'm level funding. I'm sorry, uh no, sorry, we've cut, actually, I I made a request to level fund um overtime, but it looks like uh Mike is recommending that we we fund based on actual expenditures through uh December thirty-first right now. And I I don't generally have, I I guess I don't have a problem with that right now.
Can I ask you a question about that, Mr. Lavialette?
Sure.
So you're saying level funded. I just want to make sure I have the most accurate.
Uh I'm sorry, I I guess, actually, I guess I, it is a level funded. I think I cut it.
It's less, yeah. No, I just wanted to ask you, that's correct, right?
The twenty-five hundred dollars is correct, yes.
And then my other question is when you, when we say that the new Assistant Town Accountant, who we don't know, we're we're advertising right now, we don't know who will fill that role, they are going to start at a grade six step one. That's based on their job description, right? It's it's not the the person who it's a union position. And so there's a certain skill set that's required um of the person who will fill that role. And so I guess my question is, it can't be someone who um doesn't have the prerequisite uh qualifications that could fill that role. Is that correct?
Yep, that sounds fair.
Why it starts it. This is a little different, I'm sorry, that uh when we filled the town clerk position recently. So I was just trying to get that clarity. I know this is a union position, so um thank you, sir.
Yeah, uh if I may, I I can see that um so the the lines are, the lines are backwards here, sorry, looking at Mike's screen here. So the benefit clothing allowance and the overtime additional hours, those dollar amounts are backwards. And and well, first of all, they're out of order uh numerically and um they're backwards. So the clothing allowance should be, should be two hundred dollars on Mike's recommendation and I'll fix that now.
Okay.
It is in the printed ones we have. It's correct.
It is correct. Okay, so I I will fix those two line items and I'll I'll reshuffle them uh before you get a final version. But anyway, it looks like I'm, I'm cutting, I'm cutting the uh, I'm cutting the overtime by about sixteen hundred dollars on my request. I'm level funding the benefits, the clothing allowances, that's a contractual obligation.
Sure.
And um the the new Assistant Town Accountant, I believe that's still a benefit within within the union agreement right now.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Um sorry, go ahead.
No, sorry, I thought you were done. Sorry, Chris.
I'm good. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, no, so the recommendation is that uh for fiscal fiscal year twenty twenty-two uh for the Town Accountant, that'd be a hundred fifty thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-five cents. That's the same recommendation as the Town Administrator and it's almost a fourteen percent, fourteen percent decrease in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and ten cents. So that's good.
I'm with it.
So I, I make a motion that we approve this budget, the Town Accountant's budget at one hundred fifty thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? And I just um, I just wanted to tell the Town Accountant, thank you, sir, for being mindful. Um it is greatly appreciated, um especially during, you know, this sort of fiscally uncertain time. Um and uh I just wanted to make an aside comment. Um I know before Town Administrator Mullen started, we got to know each other very well over this budget work. And I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work and just dealing with me and dealing with the calls and the texts and the emails and the uh just like the general back and forth, dealing with the other department heads, sending the budgets back and forth. I just really appreciate it all very much.
Oh, you're very welcome. And just just my job. And I really can't take much credit for the reduction in my budget. Actually, the the biggest decrease in the budget is the vacation buyback time. Now that Linda's retired, we no longer have that cost. It was twenty thousand dollars for the current fiscal year. That's not even in the budget right now. So that's the, that's the biggest reduction in my budget right now.
Awesome. And it's okay if you take credit. Um any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. I just wanted to clarify for the public, if I may. Um I will entertain public input questions as we go. I just asked that everybody, that it be related like directly to what we're talking about. It's it's a long meeting already with the three Selectmen and the Town Administrator and the different department heads. So I just asked that everybody be mindful, but I will absolutely entertain questions as we go, if that's okay with my colleagues.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. So the next budget item is account one forty-one. Board of Assessors, there's a request for two hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and two cents. It's also, I don't have the top part of this. It looks like it's also the Town Administrator's uh recommendation.
Yes.
It's a twelve point seven two increase. Kind of figure out what the increase is. Uh part of it is the uh vacation buyback.
That that's literally, I'd say eighty or to ninety percent of it, Selectman Pacheco?
Yeah.
And that's like contractual.
Right, right. So that's sixteen thousand dollars, a little bit more than sixteen thousand dollars. Uh any questions about the budget? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Assessors' budget for FY twenty-two at two hundred twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and two cents.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone else have any questions, discussion under this? Hearing none. Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
So the next uh account is account number one forty-one, it's the Town Treasurer's uh budget. Uh there's a request for one hundred eighteen thousand sixty dollars and ten cents. It's the same recommendation as the Town Administrator. That's an increase of one point four percent. Some of those increases are actually uh salaries. Uh any questions about this budget?
And then I just wanted to, I know it's not a lot, but um as the offices were redone, some departments did put a small amount, it's a one-time request for new office furniture. Some of the desks were not going to make the move, for example, um even though it's just down the hall. Um so that is what uh fifty-four twenty is. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Any further discussion? I'm going to make a motion that we approve the budget, Town Treasurer's uh budget of account number one forty-five in the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand and sixty dollars and ten cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next budget is one forty-six. It's the Town Collector, Tax Collector. They're requesting uh a hundred and four dollars and a hundred four thousand dollars. One hundred and forty, uh forty dollars and ten cents. And it's the same recommendation as the Town Administrator. Some of those increases are salaries. Uh there is uh a reduction, I guess, in the overtime, does that sound, does that look correct, of a hundred dollars? And it's a one point five nine increase over the previous uh year. Any questions?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the Town Collector's budget at FY twenty-two hundred and four thousand one hundred sixty dollars and ten cents.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And and I just wanted to thank again all the department heads for being um really mindful of our requests to try our best to level fund everything. Hearing no further discussion. Selectman Gulart?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next budget item is account number one fifty-one, it's Town Council.
Okay, my note says we approved it on March the tenth.
Yes.
I'm okay with that. Okay.
Sounds good to me. Sounds good to me.
How about data processing, we didn't approve that, I don't believe, data processing, it's account number one fifty-five. There's a request of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and twenty-eight cents, and the town administrator is asking for sixty-six thousand, seven hundred six dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I could just very quickly add something. In fifty-three oh seven, fifty-three ten, and fifty-three eleven. Like I inadvertently also included those in the departmental request as well, but I just wanted to explain that the that the two, the two thousand dollars in fifty-three oh seven and a thousand dollars each in fifty-three ten and fifty-three eleven, like it's anticipating. Actually, along with a potential along with a potential town meeting article, to fund the upfront cost of getting the board of health. Planning and the conservation department onto the same exact online software that the building department is now on, that would allow for hopefully enhanced coordination and information sharing between the departments. So what the additional four thousand dollars in this line item actually funds is the user fees. With an approximately twenty-seven thousand dollar article for the one-time setup cost for those three departments coming before town meeting, I believe at this point, so I wanted to give actually a little more context to that, just in case there was any questions.
I appreciate that, I guess my one, if Selectman Pacheco will allow me, my one question. My one question is, so the twenty-seven thousand dollar special article is a one-time thing, understood? The user fees will be yearly, correct? Because it's the cost of the service, right?
Those are, yeah, so those those like an annual user fees per user.
Thank you, sir, and there were, I know I had some conversations and you were part of them, Town Administrator Mullin, and not all of them, because you weren't able to come to every one, obviously, of the meetings before you started, the fact that you came to any is great. We had conversations and people were mistaken about the people, department heads, some were putting those software requests in their budget, and so I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board that the reason why this is larger is is not that it's a whole new cost to the town. It's that we're consolidating those things, taking them out of those departmental budgets, because they're technically network processing, data processing, and putting them here in one central location, so we can really understand total pie chart, how much percentage of our budget is being consumed by data processing, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I know it's a lot of money, but it's not all a new cost.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I got a question, on the sheet that we had for March tenth. This budget was sixty-two thousand, seven hundred six dollars, twenty-eight cents. Mike, what were the three lines that you talked about changing?
So. Yeah, so yes, like there was an existing line fifty-three oh seven. That was, that was increased to two thousand dollars. Then lines fifty-three ten and fifty-three eleven were actually added in the last two weeks. So that explains along with the two thousand in the board of health line item, the additional two thousand, one one thousand for planning and one thousand for conservation, that would get from the sixty-two seven to the sixty-six seven.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to make a motion that on account number one fifty-five data processing that we approved the recommended budget of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred six dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? And I just wanted to thank members of the board of health, the planning board and the conservation department, along with our building commissioner, because I'm sure they're all working together on this. For this forward thinking, I think it's a really good thing, it will be a really good thing for our residents, so I just and it will streamline their own individual operations and also get them on the same page, and I think this is fabulous, so good work, everybody.
See, if I could just add one thing, Mister Chairman, on that, I mean. If I could, like, understanding that we needed to get to this evening in terms of a budget recommendation, just to be clear. Oh, I haven't actually discussed this, oh, you know, these, oh, the oh, the expansion of the services with the planning, conservation and the border health, but I want like in the next three to four weeks, that is on my list to do, so going in to the fincom process and then going into town meeting, oh, you know, there could hopefully be everybody on the same page, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, sir.
The next budget item is account number one fifty-eight text.
You think we need to vote, that's all. Nope, sorry, you're like, we're done. Selectman Pacheco, sir.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is an aye, it's new to me, usually I'm the one forgetting, so I understand.
I went on to the next page already, so I thought we voted. So account number one fifty-eight, tax title foreclosure, it's level funding at in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars, and that's the town administrator's recommendation also.
Move to approve the tax title foreclosure account for FY twenty-two at sixteen thousand dollars.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next agenda item is one sixty-one town clerk. There's a request of a hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred nine dollars and forty, sixty cents. That's a reduction of fourteen thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-nine cents, it's a point, it's a nine point three eight reduction, it's the same recommendation as the town administrator, and I think the reduction is because the new town clerk is getting paid a smaller salary than a former town clerk. That's the biggest jump.
No, you're definitely correct about that, I think my recommendation, and I did this not in like an official capacity, I did this before Town Administrator Mullin started. My recommendation was based off the figure that former town clerk Susana Madeiras gave me. And so it's actually sixty-four thousand, nine hundred nineteen.
Actually, if I may, Mister Chairman and Mike, so Mike's recommendation is eight hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars short of the departmental request. There is an education stipend that amounts to approximately that eight hundred dollars we need to include in the budget in order to compensate Mister Pacheco correctly.
Thank you, sir. I didn't have that piece of information that night, all right.
No, no, that's something I just learned about last week, so Mike, if you're if you're agreeable to this, I'd like to add you have eight hundred dollars to your request. Your recommendation.
Yes, wholeheartedly.
I'm sorry, Town Administrator Mullin.
That's fine.
What line is that going into?
That's going into fifty-one oh one.
Okay.
So you were right, Selectman Pacheco, we will be going with the departmental request, sir.
Any motion? If not, I'll make a motion that on account number, well, I will discuss in this account. If not, if we are, I'll make a motion that on account number one sixty-one town clerk that we approved a budget rec budget recommendation of one hundred and thirty-nine dollars, hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars, a hundred nine dollars and forty cents. Is that including the eight hundred, the eight hundred dollars?
That is now including the eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
Would you just say that number again, please?
The one hundred thirty-nine dollars, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, a hundred nine dollars and sixty cents.
Correct.
Forty, sixty cents.
No, sixty, you're correct, second was right.
And that has, that has the eight hundred in it.
That's correct.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Thank you to our town accountant for keeping us on the up and up.
No worries.
Hearing no further discussion, oh, I just just want to mention, again, new furniture for the newly renovated office. That is fifty-four twenty, that is one time. And that was it, I just wanted to make note of that.
Sure.
Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Pacheco, sir.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next budget item is account number one sixty-two elections, there's a request for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. It's the same recommendation as the town administrator, it's a reduction of twenty-seven thousand and eight hundred dollars, and I think it's because we have less elections coming up in fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the FY twenty-two elections budget at twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next budget item is account number one sixty-three, registration, there's a request of forty-seven hundred dollars, it's the same. That was Alexa, I'm sorry. TA's recommendation is four thousand, seven hundred dollars, it's a reduction of thirteen hundred dollars or twenty-one point sixty-seven percent.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the FY twenty-two budget registration, the amount of four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next budget item is one seventy-one conservation commission, there's a request of sixty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. The town administrator is recommending fifty-five thousand, six hundred dollars, let's see what the difference is. Conservation agent, there's a request for a reduction, I guess, in the salary.
I believe we have Mister Mello here, Selectman Pacheco, so I'll let you, if you want to throw it over to him. Just on the fifty-one oh five, because I feel like that's your question, the difference was basically between the request of the conservation commission and what I felt the, what what could be supported by the town during a pandemic, so that is the most of the difference between the two.
So is that the town administrator's recommendation, or was it when you were acting town administrator?
It was when I was, so I would love to hear if Town Administrator Mullin has any input, and then I'd love to hear from of course, Mrs. Caledonia, our conservation agent, and also Mister Frenette and Mister Mello, I thought Mister Mello was here as well.
He is, I think.
So, so yes, thank you, like in terms of the in terms of the town administrative recommendations that had been made by the chair, generally speaking. There were, there were a few that I addressed based on updated information that I had. But there were, you know, probably ninety percent of the recommendations that have been made. Like I wanted, like I kept them and, like even if I understood there was going to be a discussion about them, I really wanted to hear what the discussion I was going to center on and how that could inform how we all go forward, so I wanted to ring to tonight to actually hear other thoughts, the feedback consensus, and then I use that information to go forward.
Um, I, it's a little bit cut off, before we go to the conservation commission, because I want to hear from Mister Frenette. Mrs. Caledonia, if she wishes to speak, and also Mister Bernato, Kevin Bernato. Can you read what the notes say? It's cut off on my copy. My figure was based on a certain number of hours a week, and I just couldn't read the whole thing, I apologize, thank you.
It says the recommendation is thirty hours per week based on current pay.
Okay, and that was the difference between us, but I, if the board is amenable, I would like to throw it over to Mister Frenette and then to Mister Bernato and then to Mrs. Caledonia and or if there are other conservation members that would like to provide input, you have the floor. And this is Mister Frenette, hold on one second. I don't see him on here.
He's under, he's under Sylvia.
Ah, okay. Mister Frenette, you can feel free to hit that unmute button in the lower left-hand corner, and you have the floor, sir. I can totally see him too. There you are, hello.
Hello. I'm on the phone because we couldn't, the computer didn't want to help.
It's Murphy's Law, Mister Frenette.
Okay, Mister Chairman, I just wanted to run through some things about the position of conservation agent. When the job was posted, Mallory made up you know, a job description, and she sent it over to me and and Todd, and both of us went over it. But before we we could get it to Mallory, she retired and we never did get it. We never did get the job description that we put together to the agent. Or to the applicants. But anyway. We, this, this particular job that this woman is doing for us is it it's just snowballing into into things that are, it's just incredible how much work this girl has got to do. And and I'm, and and I'm feeling a little guilty about we're not paying her properly, we went through we we checked with different towns and comparable towns and agents and we'd just like to catch it up to where it ought to be.
Can I ask you a question, Mister Frenette?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir, and I don't mean to take your time, you you can speak for as long as you want, you know, my board colleagues permitting, of course. But my, can you just explain for my colleagues on the board and for the public, what's the difference between the number that I put in that conservation agent salary line and your number, so my proposal was thirty hours a week based on the current pay scale, can you describe your departmental request for this particular item?
Yes. The job was posted for twenty-five hours. You know, not thirty. So when she accepted the position, it was, if it was for twenty-five hours a week. It's the salary difference that and it's not so much the hours, because she'll put in as much time as she needs, I know she she has been. She's been, she's been working Sundays, but the 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 job should be twenty-five hours a week and the salary should be increased considerably.
Okay, so, okay, so I understand the difference, colleagues, before. Do you understand, before we go to Mrs. Caledonia and if she chooses to speak, and then Mister Bernato, do you understand the difference? Between our. Okay. Of course you do, Mister Frenette. Mister Frenette, did you have anything else before I go to Mister Bernato, sir?
Well, I'd like to hear what Mister Bernato and Charlie Mello has to say also.
Okay, me too. You gentlemen have the floor.
I guess I'll go first, if Charlie doesn't mind. I was actually surprised when I found out that Lisa was making thirty dollars an hour, I had just assumed that it was a little higher, so when it came to us during the meeting and she had said that she was looking for an increase and explained how it all transpired through the job description, I really believe it was kind of rushed, because we, Charlie was out for a little while and we were looking to budget time, we were looking to fill that position, so maybe it was overlooked somehow, but I believe if Lisa demonstrates that across the board what conservation agents are making, we can kind of go from there, that's my thoughts.
My, my impression, and I'm not. My, um, my impression, and I'm not, I'm not going to give my opinion yet. Just, obviously, some of my opinion is in the recommendation, but, um, since I made that recommendation, I have seen how Mrs. Caledonia, and I guess I should just talk about the role in general of Conservation Agent, how important it is, how needed it is, and I feel like in this role, Mrs. Caledonia has only begun to scratch the surface of things that need to be done, should have been done, but we have a volunteer commission that, as you know, Mister Bernato can't get to everything. You have other jobs, other lives, other commitments. Um, and so those are my two cents, so I'm willing to, um, to hear this out, and I'm willing to change, um, my mind on it, um, given the information. But I do want to throw it over to Mister Mello before I throw it over to my colleagues. Do you have anything, Mister Mello? You can take your time. You just have to click the unmute button in the bottom left-hand corner of your Zoom screen.
Let me see if I can do that. I'm on my phone. I couldn't.
I can, I just heard you. You were loud and clear. Yep, I can hear you, sir.
Yep.
Okay. Yes. No, I agree with Kevin and Bill. She is underpaid for what she does, and we decided that salary was, uh, was suitable for her. I don't know what the commission, I mean, the, uh, Budget Commission is, uh, has it been reduced from our request? Hello?
Sorry, it hasn't been officially reduced. I just made a re- recommendation, um, based on seeing the work that Mrs. Cali- now, this was already like a month ago that I made this recommendation, so things have happened since then. But it was mostly just based on thinking that more hours were needed. Um, and so now we're having a different conversation. I understand where you're coming from. Um, so I get it.
Uh, that's, that's the only comments I have.
Thank you, sir. You're always brief. I love it. And I do want to throw it over to my colleagues. You have the floor.
I'd like to hear from Lisa first.
Oh, yes. Did you want to speak, Mrs. Caledonia? I didn't want to throw, I didn't want to, um.
Sure, sure. I don't, I don't mind. Um, so, you know, I obviously took the position, and I'm happy I'm back. Um, and, you know, I think the guys are happy that I'm back. Um, and I, I just would like to, you know, looking at other salaries around, it's hard to find a comparable town. Um, because, you know, we are in a rural town, we're not in an urban environment. But when you look around, um, I don't know the percentage, but if you look around Dayton, a fair bit of it is wetland or, and/or rivers and tributaries. And, um, so, you know, a, a good chunk of the land mass in Dayton is, um, is protectable. So, in any case, you know, I'm happy to be back. I just would like to, you know, get a comparable salary. Um, you know, I looked at, um, looked up my colleague in Middle Borough. She, I believe, has been the agent since we graduated college together. And she's making twenty dollars an hour more than I am right now. Um, I have the back, the back, private sector back, background. If I hadn't left Dayton, I wouldn't have, uh, moved on to the private sector, which I think gave me a lot of the experience necessary for this job. Um, I'm able to, you know, see it from that other angle as well. But that's pretty much all I wanted to say, and I appreciate your time, and I, I really appreciate how far the town has come in the past twenty years.
Thank you. You've been a part of that, and, um, I guess I just wanted to say, um, and I just wanted to further elaborate and then hear from my colleagues that a lot of what I was alluding to earlier are like action that you've taken with the Conservation Commission based on different site visits you've been doing. Um, those things come to the Board of Selectmen, copies of them. Um, so, and I've reached out to you, and I've said, thank you so much. Like, you're really, um, scratching the surface. You're finding all these things. I'm sure it's stressful for you. But I just wanted to thank you, and I don't want you to think that, um, what I had recommended was not, um, taking into account or being appreciative of the job that you're doing. Um, I think, um, one of our previous speakers really hit the nail on the head when they said that this was done a little bit hastily in the sense of Mister Mello's reduction, um, the way it was presented to us at the time by the previous town administrator, Mrs. Aaronstein, was that we really needed to move on it. Um, and so in that regard, it was hastily, um, done, so I'm glad we're having this conversation. And I would love to hear from, uh, my colleagues. So you have the floor, Selectman Goulart and Selectman Pacheco.
How many hours are we talking about? Twenty-five or thirty for FY twenty-two?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. No change in hours, Selectman Goulart.
What is the present?
Where the recommendation come from for thirty hours? That's, that's written here.
So that was just, I thought, a compromise between the request for twenty-five hours, but at an increased rate of pay versus more hours and a workload that, you know, may or may not be, um, filled in thirty hours a week.
Okay, so it's twenty-five hours.
Their request, correct.
Okay.
So what is the hourly wage right now?
Thirty dollars an hour, I believe Mister Bernato said.
So this would be an increase of ten?
Thirty, it's thirty dollars an hour.
So this is an increase of ten dollars an hour?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I have to say that, uh, if you don't mind me calling you Lisa. Everything I've heard, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I think you probably warrant this increase, uh, given all the work that you've been, uh, doing. I don't like the fact that you're working more hours than what you have to work, so, uh, I don't know how we can address that, uh, fact. But there also is a, uh, somebody in the chat room, Brett?
Oh, yes, I wanted to touch upon that.
Sure, okay, so.
Mister Hull, who lives on, uh, Main Street, asked a good question. He asked, did the salary discussions take into consideration the role the agent will play in the Forest Hills project discussions? The answer to that is no, because those discussions, Mister Hull, took place, I'd say a couple weeks before we heard from the, um, Planning Board Office Manager, um, regarding the need to transfer money from the reserve account into the account for the Forest Hills Estates project. So the answer to that is no, and that's a good point. Um, unfortunately, Miss, Miss Caledonia, you may have, you know, a little bit of work to do, um, from that project, so. And, um, Mister Woods, who lives on Chase Street, wrote, I'm sorry, I'm just reading the comments as they come in. Lisa's invaluable to our town, and I support her a hundred ten percent, and I agree with Mister Woods, so, um, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, so was Mister Wood asking for a hundred and ten percent increase?
No, I don't think so. I won't speak for him, though.
Can I also bring something to the, uh, to your attention? Um, I'm, I'm not sure how much it is. I haven't dove into any of the budgets, revenues, all that. But I do know that the Conservation Commission brings in, um, a fair bit of, um, wetland filing fees, which other towns use that towards the salary, so I'm hoping that that's what the Conservation Commission is doing through the accountant. And maybe Chris could answer that and make, confirm. I know, uh, he and, yeah, he and I had a discussion at one point about it.
Mister Laviellet?
So right now, there is no contribution coming in from the wetlands file, you know, to offset any of the salary right now, but it's, it's certainly an option. Um, if, if that's the, if that's the Conservation Commission's, uh, wishes, although there may be some restrictions as to exactly what those wetland filing fees could be used for, and I'm not, I'm not ready, I'm not prepared to provide you a, an accurate answer tonight without researching the law. Then maybe we, we may be restricted as whether or not we can finance or fund a portion of Lisa's salaries with those wetlands filing fees.
I'm pretty positive other towns do that, but yeah, if you would look into it.
Absolutely.
If you don't mind, um, Mrs. Caledonia, Mister Laviellet, looping in the town administrator, Mister Mullin, on that, simply just to report back to the Board of Selectmen on this.
Of course.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman?
Yeah, Selectman Goulart.
Uh, folks, before you spend a lot of time on that, historically speaking, the Finance Committee is not going to approve that. All salaries in things like that, annual expenses, with the exception of the ambulance account, those are raised and appropriated, and any fees coming in end up in, uh, estimated receipts and closeout to free cash. Finance Committee does not, has not in the past, uh, approved those kind of offsets for other accounts, so you can look into it, but, um, you should be aware of that.
Well, all right, so the wetland filing fees do not go into the general fund right now, Nancy. They actually go into a special revenue fund right now.
And how are they expended?
I'm not sure. I don't know that we've, I don't know that we've spent much money recently that I can recollect.
I can tell you that account has never come before the Finance Committee, to the best of my knowledge. So I'm wondering if, in fact, it has, uh, other uses, like whether it's acquiring land or something. Because obviously, we've had these things in the past, and the fact that the previous town accountant didn't bring it to the attention of either the Board of Selectmen or the FinCon, that this money was available to offset, let's say, salaries. But again, I, I'm just making you aware of what has happened in the past with, uh, a general statement about Finance Committee and salaries and things. Um, I do have some more questions.
You have the floor.
Mrs., um, I noticed that line fifty-one nineteen, there was money originally budgeted for perk tests. It's my understanding that, uh, Lisa has been witnessing perk tests at times. Is that true, Lisa?
Not perk tests. Um, I've been reviewing the location that, uh, the Board of Health was planning to allow the perks to be conducted in to make sure they're at least a hundred feet away, which is what Charlie did before.
All right, so is that what is not in your job description?
Right, that's not in my job description, and I've been doing it.
Um, I just bring that to the attention of the board, because, um, obviously, yeah, she is putting in long hours, which quite frankly, you should not be exceeding your twenty-five. But anyhow, uh, that, I think, needs to be addressed. That if additional duties have been added to her job description, based on what was said tonight about, you know, maybe hasty doing the job description, so forth and so on, we need to keep that in mind. Um, not having that job description in front of me, I also don't know if it contains the requirements that she participate in site visits with the Stormwater Committee. She has been integral with the site visits we've done, because some of these solar farms that we've gone out and, uh, looked at were potentially looked at years ago and were flagged or were marked and whatever, and what we're finding out is flags have disappeared, uh, compliance was not adhered to. Uh, some of the solar developers have been told, um, certain things have expired, I'll go back and mark the wetlands now, and so I'm just mentioning this because of involvement with the Stormwater Committee, so I'm always, the Stormwater Committee, if it's a site visit, we take a couple of hours out of that, so I just mentioned that.
No, I think that's a really good point. Um, I think the board was definitive when we decided to keep the health agent as having some hours specifically dedicated to stormwater, that the Conservation Agent wouldn't do that. However, I think we all understand that sometimes these things are oftentimes may overlap. Um, and so it sounds to me like she's been helping out and assisting in doing things that are above and beyond the role, and I'm going to take that into consideration, um, with my vote tonight.
Right, and I will mention also, since you mentioned the health agent, uh, when we do site visits, the solar farms, um, obviously, the health agent is there also, um, and now that we have Lisa, she has come along, uh, because of her expertise in certain areas, so.
And it's appreciated. Uh, do any of my, uh, other colleagues, really, Selectman Pacheco, do you want the floor, sir? Do you have anything else?
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
I asked my questions.
Uh, in general, does anybody have anything else they'd like to add before I entertain motions regarding this budget? And I'm speaking, anyone from Conservation?
Uh, I just had one more thing, Mister Chairman.
Yes, absolutely.
I think, I think we're in the same crossroads we were when, uh, we separated the Board of Health from the Selectmen. Uh, now we're, um, venturing out now with the Conservation. And now we have an agent, we're seeing a new workload, so we're kind of in that same position. And I think we have to assess her, uh, her experience and match it with the pay.
Thank you, sir. I think one thing before I entertain motions to your point, Mister Bernato, is I think there's a lot to say about, and I don't mean this in any pejorative way, like professionalizing a department, just like what happened with the Board of Health, that happened with the Board of Selectmen when we got a town administrator, and we hired an administrative assistant and moved Mrs. Brady to executive assistant. Um, I understand that process. I think it's important. Um, and we have a lot of building going on, and I really feel like, um, it is, you know, the difference between my request and your request is, you know, what, six thousand dollars? Um, I think it's a small price to pay, in my opinion, to have someone to assist, who it's their job to make sure those processes are going correctly and by the law, by the bylaw, and by the book. So I totally see your point, and I agree. You've been, you've been a part of a lot of this professionalization, so I appreciate it. Anything else? And I did want to add one final comment. In going over the town administrator's budget overview, in the total budget, all our departments, we have a forty thousand, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Town Administrator Mullin, a forty thousand dollar increase from FY twenty-two from FY twenty-one. Um, and if we make it forty-six thousand dollars, because we are going to pay our Conservation Agent six thousand dollars more, I think that that is fair. I think that that is a good investment, so, just my two cents. And with that, I will entertain motions regarding the departmental requests for account number one seven one Conservation Commission.
I'll make a motion that we approve Conservation Commission's account number one seventy-one's budget request in the amount of sixty-one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Uh, Mike, do you want to offer an opinion on this higher number?
Sir, he's like, no, I don't. Getting muted.
Yeah, no, I think it's warranted. I mean, I've been, uh, the last two and a half weeks, uh, you know, I've I actually had the chance to get to know, uh, the Conservation Agent really well. Uh, yes, I mean, I think the comments that she, um, has her work cut out for in, in the last three months, I believe, has already done yeoman's work in terms of modernizing the office and all, actually dealing with all, all the issues that we need to be dealing with right now. Uh, yeah, I wholeheartedly support it, Mister Chairman, and so, Goulart.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye, and I want to thank my colleagues, um, for really, um, trying to open the board's eyes as to why this investment is needed, um, and advocating for it, and I just really appreciate it. So thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Pacheco, the show is yours, sir.
Okay, the next account is one seventy-four, is the Dayton Trails Committee. They're requesting.
One second. Got it.
Requesting a budget, uh, of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. We've got to keep in mind that this used to be in the budget for the Board of Selectmen. Now it's a separate budget, and somebody just changed it on me. Okay, we're back.
All right, project, Ken.
That's all right.
Selectman Pacheco, do you remember how much it was last year when it was in the, I think it was fifteen hundred, so is thi- this is just a um, one thousand five dollar increase, I think? Over FY twenty-one.
I think it's one thousand and fifty, but that's, they're, they're going to do a lot of work. If you remember, they came before us, and they have a lot of plans and ideas, so I'm supporting this request.
I agree. Selectman Goulart?
Um, I was, uh, going to make a motion that we approve, uh, the Dayton Trails Committee budget for FY twenty-two at two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Next on our agenda is the Planning Board Budget, one-seventy-five. Selectmen Pacheco.
Yes, they're requesting seventy-three thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. And I believe the request from Town Administrator, was that you, Brett?
It was.
Okay, sixty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and eight cents. Maybe you can explain your request.
So my request, so let's start with fifty-one oh one. I mean, it's not a lot of, it's forty-three dollars, but no, we're not, the FinCom hasn't supported in previous years the elected or appointed boards getting the two percent raise, so I took that out based on that action, and also the board isn't getting a two percent raise and all that. The other difference, I'm just going through. The stipend in fifty-one oh two is also that, so it's without the two percent. That's the difference in that line. In fifty-one ten, I believe that's reduced, not because, you know, we don't value the Planning Board Office Manager. I think that salary is going to be split with the zoning board. And I don't know if Town Administrator Mullin has any information, like more information that he wanted to share with us on that.
So yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So with the conversation that's been happening about actually sharing the Planning Office Manager with or actually having a joint or shared role in the Planning Office Manager, in the Board of Appeals Office Manager. You can see, I'm actually working with the former, the former Assistant Town Accountant last week. There is, there will be a sixty-forty split based on the annualized hourly rate with the ZBA. And for the Planning Board Budget, it actually brings that line item down about eleven thousand dollars or so. And when we get to the ZBA, you can see the same offset, like in the impact to the ZBA budget. But all told, this is actually, it's something that's efficient. That really makes sense, but it's efficient and it will save the town money while actually aligning, you know, a lot of the work that goes into that office, so it's very beneficial and helpful, in my opinion.
I, I agree, and not only that, but I also think that just in terms of the joint position, I think that's more attractive to a potential candidate, for example, than having one fifteen-hour zoning Board of Appeals Office Manager. I think I filled that role two or three times since twenty sixteen. So there's a lot of turnover, and I think it's because it's part-time, basically. So I look forward to the synchronicity, but I also look forward to just having, you know, some sort of continuity between the two roles and having it filled by one person, so I think it will be beneficial to both boards and to the town. Anyone have, Selectmen Pacheco, I'm sorry.
No, so the recommendation is going to be sixty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and eight cents, am I correct? So I'll make a motion that on Department Account Number one-seventy-five Planning Board, that we approve the recommendation of sixty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and eight cents.
I got a question here. There's two clothing allowances in there, there can only be one. You're going to split the clothing, there's two hundred dollars in planning for clothing, I think, and two hundred in zoning.
Oh, oh, okay.
So that, if you're going to do a split, you gotta, there's an extra two hundred that needs to come out of there.
Yeah, because it would be filled by one person. Is that, that's correct, Town Administrator Mullin, right?
Yes, I believe so, in terms of agreeing with the CBA, yes. So if we do, to keep all things equal, hundred times point six, that would be one-twenty.
Yep.
Then when we get to ZBA, we can offset the ZBA with the eighty. Let me just check really quick to make sure it's there. Yes. Yes, okay, that will be perfect.
Is the board amenable to that, or does the board want to keep it in one and not the other? And I'll leave this up to you, Paul.
Yeah, I'm okay with splitting it. So I'm going to
I am too.
I'm going to amend my motion on Account Number one-seventy-five Planning Board. Recommending that we approved a budget of sixty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, if I may, before you take your vote, Mike, can I have you check the calculation on the sixty-forty split on Kerry's salary?
One.
On five-one-one-zero?
Yeah, let me just pull that up. If everyone can be here with me for a minute.
Take your time, sir.
Chris, I was using the fifty-two and a quarter for FY twenty-two, that, that is correct, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But we should be able, Mike, if I may, we should be able to just take sixty percent of the forty-two seven ninety-seven. I'm actually coming up with twenty-five six seventy-eight sixty-three for, you know, for Kerry's salary within the Planning Board's budget, rather than the thirty thousand or so that you have there now.
So yeah, Chris, but it's not actually the sixty percent of the forty-two. The tot- the total, the total, the total annualized salary, because it's being combined into one salary. And I can tell you the grade in a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, sorry, the, the, the original request, the forty-two seven ninety-seven was based on what Kerry would have made, based on her current circumstances within the Planning Board. We're now adding some additional salary to her because she's getting more hours.
Exactly, so that's being, yes, and it comes out to, I believe, just over fifty-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
Fifty-one three eighty-seven eighty-eight.
Yes.
So I think the salary for the thirty thousand eight thirty-two seventy-three and the twenty thousand five-five-five-point-one-five, that's fifty-one three eighty-seven eighty-eight.
Yes, that is the number, Ms. Gula.
So I think the only adjustment is the clothing allowance.
Yes.
I think the cor- the correct total is sixty-one one-nine-three-oh-eight, correct?
I think so, because we only made that one small adjustment.
Sorry, my version of the, my version of the proposed budget master right now is showing Mike's recommendation or Brett's recommendation at the forty-two seven ninety-seven. Mike, could you pull up your worksheet now?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I thought I was.
That's okay, that's all right.
One moment. I can't wait till we get back from Zoom.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, that's what, okay, that's what I have, so let's go.
So we're calculating.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In calculating the total salary for the combined job for FY twenty-two, there are also additional hours in there, correct?
Yes, it's going from twenty-nine to, hold on a second.
Thirty-five, I believe.
Thirty-five, I just want to make sure. But yes, I believe that is correct.
But it still results in a reduction on the ZBA side.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, twenty-nine thirty-five.
So we have a motion and a second. Before I call for a vote, I just want to make sure, are we confident with the figures as they're presented this evening? And we've discussed the sixty-forty split on the clothing allowance?
Yep.
Yep.
So I will ask my colleagues for their vote. Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye, and I want to thank our town accountant and Mr. Mullin and my colleagues for working that one out. You have the floor, Selectmen Pacheco.
Yes, the next budget item is Account Number one-seventy-six, Board of Appeals. There's a request of forty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. And the town administrator is asking for forty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifteen cents. Is that because of the adjustment on the salary?
And yes, and I think Chris was forward-thinking and also addressed the clothing allowance already. To be the forty percent, so the forty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifteen cents is the final number, Selectmen Pacheco.
Can you repeat that one last time, I'm sorry?
Yep, forty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifteen cents.
All right, thank you.
And that looks like it's, well, it's a reduction, but they're not asking for any increase in any other budget item, it looks like.
So they, so funny story, Selectmen Pacheco. A budget was never submitted, and obviously, they can't have zero dollars. We've both been on the zoning board before. You a lot longer than me, and so I literally just level-funded it, because they can't have zero. So not having any further information, Mrs. Easterday and I talked about it, and this was before the salary for the Planning Board, but an office manager for the ZBA, but this is what we came up with.
Do we know why they didn't submit a budget?
I never, ever, ever got a response.
My understanding, Selectmen Pacheco, is that the zoning board, I believe, is meeting this week. And the approval of the, the reaffirmation of this budget will be on their agenda.
Oh, good. Thank you, sir.
So moving ahead, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion, we approve the FY twenty-two budget for the Board of Appeals at forty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifteen cents.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion under this account?
Can you give me a plate, just please?
Hearing none. Selectmen Pacheco, sir.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Under Agricultural Commission, I just level-funded it from the year before, simply because no funds were ever expended, but I think the garden is going to get started. The Highway Department has done the clearing work that needed to be performed. Obviously, the house has been demolished again by the Highway Department. And I think that the custodians of the Dyson Community Garden, I think there's a different name actually now, that, that incorporates the Briggs, the historic Briggs House, but I think that they are ready to get working. And that's why I level-funded it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the FY twenty-two budget for the Agricultural Commission at two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Again, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I want to bring to your attention that the town administrator's recommendations are short by thirty dollars from the departmental request. If, if everybody's amenable, I'd like to correct the communications line item fifty-three forty to read twelve fifty-five rather than twelve fif- twelve twenty-five.
Mine says twelve fifty-five.
No, mine says twelve twenty-five. I think he's right, actually. Totally right. I don't know, that was totally a typo. I'm, I'm sorry.
Probably my fault. I think I had that budget, Brett.
But what we're viewing right now was correct, though, right?
The departmental request is correct. The town record, the town administrator's recommendations is different by thirty dollars.
Okay, your motion and the second is correct for the full departmental request.
I'm sorry, yes.
He's asking to change the TA recommendation. I'm, I'm okay with that.
And he did it already, right?
I've done it already.
Okay, that's why, okay.
You have permission.
That's, that's fine.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? And thank you, Town Accountant, as always. Hearing none. Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next budget item is Account Number one-ninety-two, Public Buildings and Properties Maintenance. There's a request for one sixty-nine, hundred sixty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. And the TA recommendation is one hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. I'm not sure why there's a difference.
Six hundred dollars in other property-related services. Line fifty-two ninety.
Yeah, the fire alarm. But there's no recommendation from the town administrator regarding that?
So, Mr. Chair, it looks like there's a note to hold on a sec, sorry, we switched pages.
Fire alarm monitoring.
Do you remember why that was taken out?
I think it's for what, I think it's that service that the board approved one or two meetings ago to stop the thing from beeping, the National. This is for the vendor that does our alarm system, like our actual security system in our public facilities. So I think this is a recurring thing.
I think you're right, because that, the problem had something to do with Comcast. And so National said that if you allow us to fix this, which will remove Comcast from that system, we've got to monitor this thing, so I think you're right. That's what that extra money's for.
I'm on the ball tonight. I love it. Thank you, Selectmen Goulart.
I didn't say you were on the ball.
So, Mr. Chairman, again, if I may?
Of course.
So in, in, in the town administrator's recommendations, that six hundred dollars is not, is not present right now? If everybody's amenable, I'd like to add that six hundred dollars to the town administrator's recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, until the town accountant, I don't have any idea what everyone is doing with my budget, but it's not.
It's me, I'm fixing it right now.
The inmates are running the asylum now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Public Buildings and Properties Maintenance Account FY twenty-two at hundred sixty-nine thousand one hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next budget item is the Department Account Number one-ninety-three, Building Insurance.
We approved that on the tenth.
We did?
Yes, we did.
Awesome.
I got a whole new book here, so I don't have anything marked.
No, I don't either, that's funny.
Well, I saved my old pages and threw all the other ones away.
That's good. How about town reports, then?
Selectmen Pacheco, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
And this is for Town Administrator Mullin as well. Did we skip one-eighty-nine, or just because the commission hasn't met in forever? We just, they don't have a budget anymore.
What are they, who is that?
Development and Industrial Commission, and they had a small budget, because per mass general law, they're really a marketing kind of committee that comes up with different marketing materials to give to potential new businesses. But I don't see a budget in here at all. I know they had one up to maybe FY twenty.
Actually, even that, Brett, if I may, I don't even think they had a budget. If they had a budget, they didn't spend anything.
They never spent it.
I, I pulled it from the presentation, but you, you're certainly welcome to reinsert, you could always vote it. Something I want to bring to everyone's attention. In order for you to fund the Industrial Development Commission's budget, you've got to give them at least a dollar for any future consideration. So if we pull them for the presentation now, we cannot go back in and put a budget in at, at fall town meeting. I, I believe that's a violation of, of state budgeting. I, I could be wrong on that. But it's very unlikely that it's very, it would be very unusual to create a new department during the fiscal year beyond the annual town meeting.
I don't.
If you want to put a budget in, I'd, I'd recommend that you, you request, you request a dollar, or you recommend a dollar, just so that they give consideration. Or you can go back in the fall or at any other time and vote them additional funding.
I'm not making any particular recommendation, I'm just really just bringing it to the board's attention, because it sort of slipped by, and I apologize. The other thing is, I don't think we're in the situation where this commission, I could be wrong, but we've been advertising to fill the vacancies for quite a while. I don't think it's going to get up and running before fall of twenty-twenty-one's town meeting, the special. However, I do think there's a possibility that maybe like next year, they could be a However, I do think there's a possibility that maybe like next year, they could be a a thriving commission that may make a budget. So w- we're not gonna be, if they don't have a budget this year at all, not even a dollar, then that doesn't impede anything from FY twenty-three regarding this commission, right?
That's correct. That's correct. It would be just like the Dyton Trails Committee. I mean, we created that budget for the first time last year, separate from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Sorry, Selectman Pacheco.
That's okay.
So do we wanna skip it still, Selectman?
The only thing I'm thinking of, if by any chance, grant money becomes available, and it might be something we wanna go after. If we don't even have a budget line, we could be precluded. Um, my gut feeling is we should have this department, and I would say put twenty-five dollars in it just so that we can, we don't know what's coming down the pike with with this, you know. It seems like there's money out there for all sorts of things. And um, I wouldn't wanna be precluded from going after some money because we don't even have a budget line. That's my only thought. And it's only twenty-five dollars, and if it doesn't get expended, you know, it's not gonna have a big impact on the tax rate or anything else, and it'll close out to free cash. It's a placeholder.
Selectman Pacheco, what do you think?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that as well.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm I'm gonna make a motion that we add um account one eighty-nine. Is that what you said?
That's correct.
One eighty-nine uh in uh Chris, in is it Industrial and Development?
It's called the Industrial Development Committee, your commission.
All right, and that we fund it at, for FY twenty-two at the rate of twenty-five dollars.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Nope.
Hearing none. Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is in the eye. Selectman Pacheco, um, before you move on, Town Administrator Mullen pointed out to me that in uh account number one seventy-six, Board of Appeals, um, there was a sick leave bonus of three hundred dollars in line fifty-one fifty-six. But per the most recent Clerical Union CBI, there's not supposed to be anything. So I think, because remember, I just copy and pasted. So what I think we need to do is re-vote the department total, stands the three hundred dollars. My apologies.
Okay, Mrs. Brady, did I make that motion?
Probably.
I believe you did, and Selectman Pacheco seconded it.
Yes, you did.
All right, um, so, Ken, if you withdraw the second, I'll withdraw the motion.
I will.
I, Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion on Department one seventy-six. And I make a motion that the uh FY twenty-two budget for the Board of Appeals now be, is it forty-one thousand sixty-one dollars and fifteen cents?
That's correct.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also in the eye, and thank you, uh colleagues.
The next uh item is account number one ninety-five, Town Reports. There's a request for twenty-five hundred dollars, and that is level funding.
I feel like we probably already did this one.
Oh, wait a minute. What's the department?
One ninety-five.
No, actually, we didn't.
That's why I brought it up.
He knew.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute. I got too many pages. Yes, we did it on March the tenth.
I said, I thought, I made a mistake. So on Jan- uh, March tenth?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm all done with mine.
Wait a minute, um. So we're all set on building insurance, right?
Yep.
Good.
So that brings us through the one hundreds. Selectman Goulart. Will you lead us in the two hundreds, please?
I thought you were gonna lead us in prayer.
Oh, we may need that.
Oh, wait a minute.
I'm just, I just need a minute here. I'm making up a page for industrial development thing, so we can insert it. Um, for twenty-five dollars. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go to the two hundreds. Um. So in the book, I'm looking at uh some inserts. Should we actually act on Department two-ten before the meeting? Cuz I think we're gonna be discussing these inserts tomorrow night.
Well, the, um, well, we could do whatever the board wants to do. I don't have any, you know, we're all independent-minded folk, so if we want to discuss it tonight, I'm happy. The the real big change here, just so everyone is aware, um, and Selectman Goulart, you will remember this, um, from serving probably two thousand seven to twenty-ten, that term. There used to be a funded lieutenant position, so the chain of command was the chief, lieutenant, and then the sergeants. Um, that position stopped being funded some time ago. Um, and it came to my attention, and um, Town Administrator Mullen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that there was no supervisor on the third shift. And this refunding of this position that already exists would allow a third, uh, excuse me, a supervisor to be present on those third shifts. Um, and so to me, um, it made sense. Um, but I don't know if Town Administrator Mullen, you had any uh thoughts on this? I know we met with the chief recently. Um, we went over everything together. Um, did you wanna add anything?
No, you're exactly right, Mr. Chair. This uh, the um uh, actually, the proposal for a lieutenant would, uh, like, actually, like, allow, uh, like, uh, like, for, like, a non- like, a non-union second in command to the chief. Uh, like, and also, too, as you mentioned, it would provide, um, actually, like, another sergeant supervisor, uh, like, on, uh, you know, the uh, the overnight shift, and there is a significant challenge that our police force now has, where they're uh, usually, they um, uh, like, have, I'll have two officers on, uh, like, in the overnight. Oh, and then if anything happens, uh, actually during the shift, uh, they basically both need to team up. Oh, and then it affects, um, actually, their ability to respond to any additional incidents. Oh, like, in having, um, having a sergeant on that shift, when number one, uh, like, it would provide supervision, but more backup uh, like, incapacity to, uh, actually, um, help that shift deal, uh, with, you know, that is a challenging shift to begin with, so.
Okay, the reason I raise this issue is because it's not on the agenda tonight. It's on tomorrow night's agenda that we discuss this position.
Okay.
So I don't think we should be talking about it tonight, even though we have been.
You wanted it under advisement till tomorrow?
Yeah, and um after we act on it tomorrow night, um, you know, um.
Well, so if we have that meeting with the school next week, we could add, I know there's two others, the school, and then there was one other budget hold, Board of Selectmen. We could add this to that next week, cuz we may have some clarity after tomorrow.
Yeah, actually, that lieutenant thing went away before I came back. I mean, when I came to the board in two thousand and seven, it was actually gone, cuz I only remember sergeants when I
Okay.
first came.
Do you know when that position? Well, we can talk about it tomorrow, but maybe we could look into how long ago, and I can speak to the chief about that, okay?
Okay, yeah.
So I will take, I will entertain, excuse me, motions to take two-ten Police Department Budget under advisement?
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Selectman Pacheco, did you wanna say anything, or you're gonna reserve till tomorrow?
Well, I I have some questions, Brett. I can ask the, will the chief be there tomorrow night?
I could certainly ask him. I think he probably is planning to be there, but I will circle back with him.
Yep, so I have some questions. Like, we can address it tomorrow night.
All right. Hearing no further discussion. Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also in the eye. Selectman Goulart.
Okay, so we're looking at Department two-fifteen, Communications Department. The recommendation uh for, from the TA and from the department, it's the same. It's three hundred ninety thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars thirteen cents. It's up slightly, looks like due to probably contract contractual salary. Oh. Is has this contract been settled yet, or are the salaries level-funded because the contract is, hasn't been resolved yet?
So this contract expired almost two years ago? At least a year ago, and my understanding was they would reach out to us when they had the representation that they wanted. Um, so we have heard nothing. When Town Administrator Aaronstein was here, I probably asked her about this every week, and the response was always the same, literally, until the day that she left about this. So we're waiting to hear from the union.
Okay, so in the case of um of salaries for operators, those remain the same.
Exactly.
Um, as we move through the other lines, um, to 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 to.
There was an increase in software support on fifty-three oh one, Selectman Goulart?
Yep. That looks like that's, yeah. That's the only thing I can see.
Town Administrator Mullen, um, I have a question for you, if it's okay. Regarding fifty-one oh three, excuse me, I'm sorry, fifty-three oh one, I said it backwards.
Yep.
Is that not something that should be in the uh data processing? Like, do we know exactly what this is for? Is this software to run the communication station?
The, to be honest with you, this was one of the budgets, Mr. Chair, that there was a TA recommendation. So I haven't yet had the ability to dive into, but I will.
Sure. Um, if maybe we could ask the chief this tomorrow night as well.
Okay, so um I'll make a motion. We take a budget, uh, two-fifteen, Communications Department, under advisement till tomorrow night.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, anything else on this? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also in the eye.
The Department two-twenty, the Fire Department. I'm in request to seven hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred two dollars fifty-six cents. And that is what the TA is recommending.
I think it's eighty-six cents. Am I incorrect? Sometimes I wonder if we all have the same version. Is it eighty-six, Mr. LaVialat?
The, the dark. The dark shading's a problem.
It is. The bolding is tough. I agree. My only question on this, um, for my colleagues and for the town accountant, I believe this has been since well-resolved, but um, the fifty-one fifteen is highlighted. I just had a question at the time, many months ago, as to making sure that that figure was correct. Do we have that clarity on fifty-one fifteen? The salary for the full-time billing slash administrative assistant?
Brett, I'm gonna have to research and get back to you. I'm not sure that I checked with the chief on that number.
Uh, my next question is, who calculated this figure off the top of your head?
I'm thinking it was me, but let me, um.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, Brett. I'll have to, I'll have to check my, I've got schedules for all the clerical staff. I'll check to see if Rebecca's there or not.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm gonna make a motion. We take this one under advisement until tomorrow.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? And thank you, Mr. LaVialat. I knew to ask. I'm like, I don't, I don't cuz what I hate is when we vote, and then we have to re-vote.
No, don't worry, I understood.
It's better we catch it in the beginning, so I appreciate that, sir.
Welcome.
Hearing, hearing no further discussion. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is in the eye.
Uh, the next Department, two-thirty-one, ambulance, uh, is this affected by the fire, the Fire Department budget, and we should, and should we take this under advisement? Chris?
I'm sorry, Nancy, can you ask me a question again?
Um, two-thirty-one ambulance service, since we're taking up the Fire Department under advisement, should we also take this one under advisement because they are connected?
Yes.
Yeah, we have the same question over the
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We take two-thirty-one ambulance service under advisement till tomorrow night.
Before I second it, I just wanna note that of all the accounts that I did, we held one, and so far, all of Mrs. Goulart. All of them were holding. I'll second the motion.
That's a coincidence is not causation. We have a motion and a second. Selectman Goulart, your vote.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also in the eye.
Hey, the good news is
Uh, Mr. Chairman, getting back to you, I did not calculate the uh, the salary for fifty-one fifteen. That's, that's not my calculation, just for the record.
Did anyone double-check it? I just wanna make sure we had other questions, like, early on in the budget. We, you know, we obviously figured everything out since then.
I have a separate worksheet specifically for Rebecca's pay, and I I'm about two thousand dollars less than what you see here in the departmental request right now. So I I will get together with the chief tomorrow, and we can discuss.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Selectman Goulart, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I was gonna say, all of these things that are getting deferred, and this will all go away as of April the tenth.
For one of us.
I I have a question for uh Chris. Um, Chris, when we were talking earlier, um do you have an idea? What's the current accounts receivable on the ambulance account? And how, how is it as far as aging goes?
I'm not su- you know what? Rebecca just sent something this afternoon. I haven't had an opportunity to look at her email yet, so she does have some figures. And I can provide that to the, to the board tomorrow night, if that's your pleasure.
Okay, do you get monthly updates on that?
No, we don't get, I don't get regular updates on the ambulance receivable. I probably should be, um, just so that we're monitoring how much, you know, what's outstanding or what's
I think Dr. Z and I would probably encourage you to do that. Just based on past experience. Um. Let me try Department two-forty-one, the Building Inspector.
You can do it.
I think I can do it, okay. The uh FY twenty-two budget request is one hundred sixty-nine thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars thirty-eight cents. Uh-oh. And the TA recommendation is one hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-six cents.
So the big hang-up, Selectman Goulart, is simply because, um, and I I spoke to the Building Commissioner about this. I think he short-changed himself a little bit. His increase was only one point five-three percent. So in my recommendation, before Town Administrator Mullen arrived, I simply took FY twenty-one's uh, request and multiplied it by two percent. So that's the difference between his departmental request and my recommendation. And my thought on this was he's been doing a lot. We've asked him to do a lot as the facilities manager, and um, between us, between everybody, his performance evaluation has, was great. So two percent seemed warranted.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion from somebody that this budget be approved at one hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-six cents for FY twenty-two.
I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also in the eye.
Hey, I got one.
We're on the board.
Yeah. The next one is Department two-forty-two, Gas Inspection. And it's uh level-funded at eight thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve at eight thousand dollars?
I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also in the eye.
Two-forty-three, Plumbing Inspection, Level Funded. Forty-three Plumbing Inspection, level funded at eight thousand dollars for FY twenty-two, is there a motion?
Can we change the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. There you go.
One more.
Sorry, Jesus, I was looking in the budget.
I'll make a motion that we approved the budget of eight thousand dollars for the plumber inspection, it's level funded.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, selecting Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Department two forty-four, weights and measures, level funded for FY twenty-two at one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars, is there a motion?
I make a motion for weights and measurements. Two forty-four, that'd be level funded in the amount of one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, selecting Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
Electrical Inspection. FY twenty-two is level funded at twenty thousand dollars, uh, same as previous year, is there a motion?
Uh, it is not level funded. It's an increase of three thousand.
So the way this was presented to me was that the building commissioner had it, had planned to request twenty thousand dollars in FY twenty-one. That was, um, negotiated down, um, but he says it's needed, especially to retain someone who's qualified and talented in the field. Um, this is a part-time, like, not even part, I'm not even sure it's part-time, it might be as needed. Um, and it's just sort of similar to, like, have the ZBA Office Manager position where you have to make it lucrative in there. Or you're just not gonna find the person or the right talent to do the job, so that's how it was presented to me. Um, I apologize, when you watch this, Mr. Commissioner, if I botched your explanation, I'm sorry. Do you have any further information on this request, Town Administrator Mullen?
Uh, no, I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, um, let me correct that, the recommendation for FY twenty-two, the departmental request is listed as twenty, previous year was, uh, excuse me, the year we were in was seventeen hundred and seventeen thousand. And the TA recommends the twenty thousand that has been requested, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion on account number two forty-five, Electrical Inspections, that we approved the recommended, uh, the recommendation of twenty thousand dollars for the budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I just wanted to, something came to me, not that anyone cares, I apologize. Little more information, um, the, they've already spent sixty-one percent of the budget request of the seventeen thousand as of December thirty-first, and I think that's also why he, um, he bumped it up. Um, there was lights out on the Dyton Berkeley Bridge, that beautiful bridge had a whole row of lights out on one side, and the current electrical inspector worked with, um, key stakeholders to get those lights back on. So that, that's an example of, like, the type, what we would call the electrical inspector for, so just so you know. Anything else? Hearing none, selecting Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
Uh, Department two ninety-two, Animal Control Officer. FY twenty-one budget's thirty-three, one twenty-five, eighty-eight. And, um, FY twenty-two, the request is thirty-three thousand. I think it's five-five-eight point four-zero.
Yep, that's correct.
And that's what the TA recommended. Um, two percent salary increase is the reason for the, uh, additional money. Is there a motion on FY twenty-two?
Yes, I'll make a motion that on account number two ninety-two, Animal Control Officer, that the request of thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight thousand forty cent, forty-eight. Thirty-three thousand five hundred fifty-eight thousand forty cents be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, before we call it to a vote, I did just want to ask, Mrs. Ferry is on the line, not to put you on the spot, you absolutely do not have to say anything if you do not want to. Um, but I want to give everyone the opportunity who did come to the meeting, Mrs. Ferry, if you have any input, please feel free, you can unmute yourself and you have the floor. Okay. Hearing none, and if she unmutes after, we can still hear her. Um, hearing no further discussion, selecting Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
Mr. Chairman, um, Department two ninety-four, Forestry. Oh, and this is that hotly contested tree warden position. Uh, the, uh, current budget two fifty-eight, uh, it might, it looks my columns are kind of run together here. Is the FY twenty-one budget four sixty-three, four hundred sixty-three dollars and eighteen cents?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and that, um, FY twenty-two is two hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-two cents, which is the same as the TA's recommendation. So the salary for insect pest control was removed.
Correct, and I believe the way it was described to me, and please, Mr. Ferry is here, so if you would like to throw the floor to him for the proper explanation, please do so. My understanding was, um, that since that individual is already being paid for one job, they cannot also be paid for this job. And that was the way it was explained to me, but if I have totally messed that up, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Ferry's explanation is, is that he's the elected tree warden, and he's entitled to that salary, but the insect pest control position is an appointed, uh, is an appointed position. So he cannot take that pay because he's already appointed as the Highway Superintendent.
This is why you're here, Mr. LaViolette, thank you.
Hey, I'm only.
And Mr. Ferry doesn't want to trade off, is that what you're telling me?
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
I don't think so.
Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Ferry, do you wish to speak?
Not, not at this time.
I'll make a motion on account number two ninety-four, Forestry, that the recommended, uh, the request of two hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-two cents be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, selecting Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Department two ninety-five, Harbor Master. The FY twenty-one budget was eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. The request for FY twenty-two is eight thousand three hundred dollars. And the TA recommendation is eight thousand three hundred dollars. So the reduction is thirty-five hundred dollars that was listed under additional equipment. Is Mr. Marino on?
Let me, here with me just a moment. I don't think so, selectman Goulart. I think.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
I believe the reduction was due to a one-time purchase in fiscal twenty-one, I think they, I think, uh, Mr. Marino bought a trailer for the boat. And he know what, now we don't need, we don't need to trail it now for about another twenty years.
I'm gonna make a motion on the Department Account Number two ninety-five, Harbor Master, that we, uh, approved the request of eight thousand three hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? And Mr. LaViolette, again, I just want to thank you, um, for just being so knowledgeable. Appreciate you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Um, we have a motion and a second, hearing no further discussion, selecting Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
Department two ninety-nine, Emergency Preparedness. FY twenty-one, the budget was eighty-five hundred dollars. That's what's requested for FY twenty-two, and that's what the TA recommended. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion then, account number two two ninety-nine, Emergency Preparedness, that we approved the request of eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion under this account? Hearing none, selecting Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Selectman Pacheco, do you mind doing the next two? Uh, batches, education is next, and then if you could do four hundred, and we'll go back to selecting Goulart, if that's okay.
Are we gonna put this one on hold?
We put the DR one, but I didn't want to put the whole thing, because I didn't know if the board was going to be okay with the Bristol Aggie slash Bristol Plymouth part of it, so.
Bristol Plymouth usually comes into the meeting, and, and quite frankly, I would think we would want to invite Aggie to come in, because now we're into capital.
So are you saying at the, we, um, the meeting next week, that we should try to maybe tier it, like thirty minutes each? Thirty minutes for DR, something like that, where we're, we're speaking to all the schools' representatives at the same time? Not the same time, but in the same evening?
Either that, or, um, I don't think Bristol Plymouth or Aggie would need thirty minutes, but um, I know they come to the FinCon meeting, so I'm wondering if we can do DR.
Sure.
And then tentatively, tentatively approve Aggie and BP, and wait for the discussion at the FinCon meeting. See, they're they're different than DR as far as how they do assessments. Um, so that's why I'm saying tentatively approve those two, and not bring them in for a special meeting with us, but ask them to come to meet with, when we all sit down with the FinCon.
That's fine with me, selectman Pacheco, what do you think?
I, I'm okay with that.
Um, Mike?
Uh, yes, that makes sense, I mean, I do agree that the, uh, you know, the debt assessment uh, increases in both, uh, Bristol Plymouth, uh, and at the Aggie, like a relatively straightforward, um. There is a surcharge, uh, for Bristol Aggie, based on the, the campus uh, construction project, uh, that I believe is right around, uh, fifty-two, um, hundred dollars per student. Um, oh, and when you multiply that times twelve, and then you add on to the original, uh, I think twenty uh, twenty-four hundred and eight, uh, twenty-eight seventeen, um, oh, you can actually see the math, the budget right there, that, uh, you know, how the debt, how the debt services are actually surcharge, surcharged in, so that information's straightforward. And then, from what I understand, the Bristol Plymouth, uh, the other capital projects, they've been, they've done as well, that is hitting the books as well, hence the increase, the two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar increase, I believe.
And, and Mike, the other thing that I mentioned was, both Bristol Plymouth and Bristol Aggie, the way they assess their member towns is not the the process is different, in other words, we have a school committee that represents the two towns at Dyton and Rehoboth. And we, let's say we deal more directly with Dyton and Rehoboth, whereas the money that we pay to the county and the money that we pay to BP, even though we have um, at BP, we have one member on that school committee. At the county level, it's a different method, and we don't per se have a member on the school committee at Aggie, if you know what I mean.
Yes, yes, and coming from a county background, I wholeheartedly get that.
Yeah, okay, so, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we defer action on the DR, um, operating and capital assessment, uh, till we meet with them. And when do we think we're gonna meet with them? A special meeting?
So yeah, if the board so chooses, like, um, I can try to schedule it, uh, for sometime next week, whenever would work for the board.
I think that's good, and I think in general, that's good, in case there's any other cleanup that we're not anticipating right now, that we may have to do, so I think having this extra meeting, other special meeting on the horizon is good for us.
Okay, so, the other two schools, I'll do in a separate motion, so my motion is that we defer action on the DR Capital and Operating Budget, until we meet with them, uh, tentatively next week.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, I'm sorry, I'm just taking notes. Uh, hearing, well, actually, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, selecting Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we tentatively approve the, uh, assessments for let's see, Bristol Plymouth
Mm-hmm.
at one million sixty thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And Bristol Aggie at one hundred and one thousand dollars and seventy-six cents, contingent on meeting with them, uh, jointly with the Finance Committee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, selecting Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Selectman Pacheco, do you mind leading us through the four hundreds, and selecting Goulart can do the five hundreds?
Sure, I just want to point out uh, that I was a union member for thirty-nine years.
Mm-hmm.
And I've done more than one-third of the budgets already, just want to point that out, so I'm not sure if I'm entitled to overtime, or to Chris, my union rep on that.
You're entitled to more headaches and possibly gray hairs and nothing else.
And no union benefits.
Correct.
So, uh, if I'm correct, the next budget is the Highway Construction and Maintenance, account number four twenty-two.
Correct.
And there's a recommendation. I guess we don't have the previous ones, we, we show the percentage of increase.
Hold on a second. Uh, there you go.
Okay, I was looking at my book, okay, thank you, no, thank you.
Selectman Pacheco, there's also, I don't know what your packet is, there's like two pieces of information that have been provided, so I don't know, you wanted to explain that as well.
Sure, I'll have to open up my notebook and turn it the other way. Okay, so there's a, uh, to whom it may concern, there's a note in here, uh, dated March nineteenth, uh, part-time administrative, regarding part-time administrative assistant. Please consider Heather, the caller twenty hours per week, as needed, as a grade four part-time administrative assistant. This will reflect the task that Heather is doing, both for our regular highway department and for the efforts needed in the Stonewater Department of our department. Stonewater Park of our department. This request is for our fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, I have attached a comparison chart for your review. I am more than happy to answer any questions for this important, uh, need to our department, so uh, presently, uh, this person works ten hours at the rate of fifteen dollars and ninety-three cents. Total, uh, yearly income is eight thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and forty-three cents. And the request is to increase the salary to twenty dollars and sixty cents, increase the hours to twenty hours, and the salary would then be twenty-one thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars, and I'd be interested in hearing from the Superintendent of the Highway Department. Is he available? Tommy, are you there?
I am.
Could you explain the increase in the request, please?
Yes, a- after Heather was hired, um, we needed to reevaluate her uh, job description, and for various reasons, it, the can was kicked around, she's only been with us, well, more than a year now. Um, it, we needed to have a sit-down with, uh, the town administrator that come up with the recommendation, and, um, now, now we're at budget time also for consideration, so it's, it's the, it's come to that time that we'd like to have this considered.
So, was she not doing Stonewater before then, is that, or she wasn't expected to do Stonewater?
She, she was doing limited ti- limited time on it before, yes.
And now that's increased.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna increase substantially, yes.
Mr. Ferry, can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
And my, because my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong. The previous administrative assistant who also didn't have a lot of hours also did a little bit of stormwater was my understanding as well, correct? Like whatever they could fit in.
Correct.
Okay, that's that's my only question. My uh my, I'm sorry, that's a lie. I take that back. My other question just for parody is, your request for fifty-one oh seven salary part-time is two thou- twenty thousand six hundred dollars, and I just wanna make sure before the board acts in any direction. The actual request should be based on this wage options clerk position scale, and it should be twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, is that right?
Yes, thank you, Brett.
Okay, I'm just making sure I wrote it down. I just uh making sure I'm following everything. Okay, those were my questions, my apologies.
So uh I think Mike is i- is that for fifty-two weeks in the four to two?
Uh yes, that actually, I think the typo was a transposing issue where the original number uh might have been a fifty-two weeks, oh, not fifty-two and a quarter weeks, so the twenty-one two fifty, I'm sorry, oh my twenty-one, five twenty-seven. Um is what it comes out to, what should be the rate based on, um and I thought it was in the, at one point. I will blame everyone else but me for the confusion. But yeah, it should be twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
So if that's correct, just for the board's knowledge, the total I have, but but the difference with the correct number would be for the departmental request, seven hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-three cents.
Would you repeat that, please?
Absolutely, seven hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-three cents.
So uh Mr. Ferry, this would al- also make her eligible for benefits?
Yes.
Health insurance and stuff like that?
Yes, so I I figured, my math was figured for fifty weeks and put two weeks into the stormwater. And then we'll see how the next year goes and we'll have an actual number for budgeting the following fiscal season. So I I, what number would we be using for the four-three-two if we're gonna use the fifty-two weeks now? On this one.
Oh, yes. Clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The twenty-one five twenty-seven is would be Heather's total salary for the fiscal year. We still need to split that between four twenty-two and four thirty-two.
So is twenty thousand six hundred the right number for four thirty-two, four twenty-two?
Yes, that's what I recommend.
Um, you're always right. I'm just gonna go with everything you say from now on. My apologies.
Um.
We can't no more. Mike's here. He watches me like the hawk.
As he should.
So I got a question for my colleagues. What the the budget that Mike is showing? I don't have any of that stuff to the left of FY twenty-two. What have you got? Do you have printed copies that show FY twenty-one so forth and so on?
So I don't, I have exactly what you have, but I have access to the master, so I am able to see that. So I understand why it's difficult for you, selectmen Gulart. Not being able
What do you have?
I have uh just the uh fiscal year twenty twenty-two and the difference between fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, increase or decrease. That's all I have. I don't have what's in front of us.
All right, so um Mrs. Brady, would you just make a note, ask Mrs. Kerwin to just print those, that page. Uh it's it's just the way it it ended up printing. But we're missing the columns that one, two, three, four, five. We're missing six columns to the left of FY twenty.
Request, yeah. We're making all like the previous year spent and requests.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So are you entertaining a motion, Ken?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the department four twenty-two highway construction and maintenance budget. FY twenty-two at seven hundred eighty-four.
Nope, the
No, seven hundred eighty-three thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And Mr. Ferry, uh I do apologize for trying to do math that I shouldn't have been trying to do, so thank you, sir, for being patient. Selectmen Pacheco, your vote, sir.
Aye.
Selectmen Gulart.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next budget is snow and ice. That was level funded. Did we already approve that?
No.
No, it's account number four twenty-three, snow and ice. Uh there's a level funding request in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the uh snow and ice removal budget, department four twenty-three for FY twenty-two at fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Ferry, do we know what we spent this year? What, how much we went over the fifty?
Yes, uh the grand total was one one hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents.
So minus the fifty?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry. Uh do the, do my colleagues have any further discussion or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none. Uh actually, let me just get, Mr. Woods of Chase, you wrote another position long overdue. Mr. Woods, you're on the money tonight. I agree. Um hearing no further discussion, selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectmen Gulart.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
Uh, just could we get a clarification? What does that mean, a position long overdue?
He was talking about the previous uh budget that we voted.
Oh, okay.
He was talking about the more hours for the administrative assistant.
Okay, cuz I'm thinking that fifty thousand, that's kind of cast in stone by the FinCon.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Can we go back to budget four twenty-two for a second? I'm not quite at the same numbers that you're at right now. I I just wanna make sure I I've got everything correct. Mike, can you go back up to four twenty-two?
Yep.
Mike, can you check the formula for the six twenty-one right now?
What, a six twenty-one?
Yeah, the the total.
Oh, yes, okay.
Could you check that formula, please?
Uh yes, it's a sum of V five to V twelve.
Those are the cells for the public watching. That, those were the cells they used to calculate that total, so they're just verifying for anyone that cares.
I've got a different total on my worksheet right now. I'm at six eighteen five ninety-seven.
Why? How? Because the six twenty-one, Chris, is what reconciles to the departmental request.
There's something wor- okay, then there's something wrong on the master. Okay, all right.
Mr. Laviollet, can you look under proposed and increase-decrease from FY twenty-one and see if that matches? Cuz that's gonna tell you where the difference is. Between what you think it should be and what we voted on.
Sorry, Brett, I that's not how, yeah, um.
Oh, you do, you did it different. No, I understand what you mean.
I think I got a bad formula here, everybody. Hang on.
Uh-oh.
There we go. Okay, I had a bad formula.
You were missing one of the numbers, weren't you?
Yeah.
That, I do it all the time at at my work, my full-time job. Chris, town accountant, you're the best. Due diligence, I love it.
Thanks, man.
Pacheco.
Where are we now? I'm all confused.
Twenty-nine.
Dayton Berkeley Bridge, selectmen Pacheco.
Okay, so uh count number four twenty-nine, Dayton Berkeley Bridge, there's a request for fifteen hundred dollars and it's level funded.
Chairman, I move that we approve the FY twenty-two departmental request for department four twenty-nine. Berkeley Dayton Bridge, excuse me, at fifteen hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, selectmen Gulart.
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next budget is four thirty-two, street cleaning, stormwater, there's a request for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Two hundred eighty thousand four hundred seventeen dollars and forty-three cents. That's an increase of thirty-six point thirty-two percent. Uh an increase of seventy-four thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Part of that is the payment for the lease for the uh street sweeper, which is fifty thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars. And the others are uh salaries that are, I'm sure, uh union uh figures. And that's it. Any other questions or any concerns?
Mr. Ferry.
Oh, sorry. Selectmen Gulart, your turn.
Mr. Ferry, contractual disposal, is that having somebody clean out the uh catch basins and taking the stuff away?
Yes. That's figured through the sausage consortium for seven, seven hundred and ninety basins.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Mullen, I just wanted to bring to your attention right now, there is no recommendation for that budget line out of fifty-three fifteen in the current setup.
Yeah.
If everybody's okay with it, I I'll make uh the town administrator's recommendation, the twenty-six eight sixty.
Yeah, I'm definitely not doing the town administrator recommendations anymore, so, Mr. Mullen, you can, you know, you can make your independent recommendation, sir.
Hold on a sec, with tape. Oh, okay, yes, okay, that makes sense. I follow.
Okay.
Yes, I'm living by the motto of what would Mr. Ferry do and
So I I do see one adjustment needs to happen.
Yep.
On uh five-two-seventy line.
Yeah.
Where we, that's where we put the payment for the sweeper. That is, that new number that you guys are entertaining would be just the sweeper payment, but I still need a two thousand dollars there if I need to do rentals as we're doing work out in the town.
So the TA recommendation should be fifty-two, five sixty-two?
Yes.
Yes.
So does the TA recommendation agree now with the department's requests?
It does now.
Okay.
It should, yeah, it should be um the same totals, uh selectmen Pacheco.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve department four thirty-two, street cleaning slash stormwater. FY twenty-two departmental budget at two hundred and eighty thousand four hundred seventeen dollars and forty-three cents.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Laviollet, can I make one recommendation? As we resolve and talk out the items in highlight that are highlighted yellow, do you mind removing them?
Sure.
Go through and resolve things just to, so it makes it easier for us? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on this? And thank you again to Mr. Ferry, of course, for being patient. Hearing no further discussions, selectmen Gulart, your vote.
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
Then it's uh the next budget item is department account number four thirty-three, waste collection and disposal. The request is for seven hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred sixty-eight thousand thirty-one cents. And that's in agreement with the town administrator. There is an increase of sixty-one thousand twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents, which is eight point eight percent increase in the budget.
Selectmen Pacheco, I don't, I I probably don't have the answers for all these increases, but I can, I can explain the big ones if you want an explanation.
Yes, I would.
My understanding, for example, for fifty-three oh three, which accounts for a third of the sixty-one thousand dollar increase is that um as it gets harder for us to find places to recycle things or places that accept recycling, it gets more expensive. Um and honestly, and I sat with the health agent and a couple board of health members. Um, it's actually much more expensive to process the recycle recyclables, excuse me, than it is like the trash. Um and so those are those increases. Trash also increased um over last year and then hazmat disposal. I don't know if I have the answer for that. Selectmen Pacheco, uh excuse me, selectmen Gulart and your adventures with various members of the health department, did that, did you ever come across that explanation for hazmat disposable, why that went off?
Well, I know when we started hazmat collections, you had to pay a fee depending upon what it was, and then I think now what's happened is the, you can take whatever they are and we don't charge, there's no offset, so I think it's because of the uh um, there's no offset, number one. Number two, the town pays to dispose of it. But it's the same kind of problem trying to get rid of
Yep.
stuff. I'll leave it at that. Uh and just just a reminder, I've told you before about MMA meetings when uh we have been um very active in sending communications to uh the legislature over this whole issue about mattresses. If that passes, I don't know what we're gonna do with mattresses. Um, there's no place to dispose of them in the state. Uh, you can't stick them in landfills. Um, it's a nightmare and uh if that's gonna be another ka-ching, if that gets dumped on us, quite frankly.
And selectmen Pacheco, fifty-two ninety-one and fifty-two ninety-two, I believe, are contractual based upon the negotiated contract between the town of Dayton and Borges Trucking.
Yep. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve department four thirty-three, waste collection and disposal FY twenty-two budget at seven hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this account?
Nope.
Hearing none, selectmen Gulart, your vote.
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
The next uh account item is four ninety-one cemetery. It's a request for level funding in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve department four ninety-one cemetery FY twenty-two budget, the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this account? Hearing none, selectmen Gulart.
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
And selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Selectmen Gulart, do you mind reviewing all of the accounts under the five hundreds?
Okay. Hey, I just got a comment. That Mr. Ferry controls a lot of money.
Now, I was like adding them up as I went along.
He's
You do an excellent uh job, Mr. Ferry, and we appreciate it, sir.
Uh, the next department is five-ten, board health regulations and inspections. So the requested amount is seventy-eight thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars forty cents. The TA recommendation is sixty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars thirty-three cents. And FY twenty-one budget is sixty-two thousand sixty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. And who would like to answer those questions?
Well, the increase that I, you know, it's tough meeting as I, you know, I wasn't the town administrator. I was just the chair of the board of selectmen, and I really had to think during those meetings with the department heads and the different members of the department, like try to put myself in your shoes, selectmen Gulart, and your shoes, selectmen Pacheco the best I could to see what wh- what I felt like would be palatable. Sometimes, you know, we disagree, sometimes we agree. So it was a little bit difficult. I felt like in fifty-one oh six, my personal opinion, this health agent does an excellent job. I'm certainly not standing here and saying they're not worth every single cent that we pay them. I just felt like when I was going through the budget, thinking in total of all the different increases as the budgets were coming in from the different department heads, and it made me a little nervous to recommend that increase for several reasons. First of all, we had Mrs. Beauregard will be retiring soon. She has a sixteen thousand dollar sick time buyback or vacation buyback in her budget. That's a sixteen thousand dollar increase. I know it's one time, but that's what I was thinking about when I got these requests. And so I tried to find a sweet spot. I tried to find the middle ground. to find the middle ground between the request and what I felt like the town could afford, taking into account all of the different budgets that we're in charge of that comprise our, um, operating budget. And I landed on fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventeen cents. And if we're able to review the notes, I think I put down what my math was. No, of course I didn't. Why would I do that?
Is anybody here from the Board of Health?
Let me look. I don't, I don't see anyone, so I'm totally fine with entertaining motions. Um, if we want to take this under advisement, we've, we've only taken, we've only taken five. There's really not that much. Um, so I will leave this decision up to the board.
Um, were they, were they aware that we were going over the budget tonight?
I mean, everybody was aware.
Yeah.
You know, it's a public meeting, so.
So I'm going to make a, I'll make a motion that under account number five-ten for the health regulations and inspection that we approved the recommendation of the town administrator's budget of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. Is there a second?
I will step down and second that motion for discussion, Selectman Goulart.
I'm looking at the one after this one too. Now, Mr. Bernardo was here earlier tonight, but I guess he's gone.
He said his inner, his internet connection was very weak and everything froze on him. So this was a while back. And I do want to point out to your question, Selectman Pacheco, we do have other department heads on the line.
Yeah.
Tonight, right now. So, you know, people were aware. I will say though, they could be making contact tracing calls. I have no idea. You know, they could very well be busy. I don't know.
Yep.
I I would have expected, uh, the chairman, and I understand Mr. Bernardo had problems, but um, I would think at a minimum, the chairman of the Board of Health should be involved on these, this one and the next budget. This is, this is an important, these are two important budgets, not that everyone's budgets are important, but I'm looking at this and I'm saying, um, quite frankly, I'm not ready to vote yes or no on either one of these. Um, I don't have enough info. The next one isn't as far out of whack as this one is, but this is substantial.
So the only real increase here in fifty, excuse me, five-ten is the health agent's salary. So I feel comfortable to, to vote on it, knowing, having met with them. Um, and, and they explained it. Mr. Mullen, are you familiar with this, um, request as well, or was this pre-you?
Believe it was pre-me, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the five-ten, uh, correct? Oh, have we gone to five-nineteen? I'm sorry.
No, no, we're still at five-ten. Have you had an opportunity to meet with the Board of Health relative to any budget stuff, uh, Mike?
No, I, no, I have not, not yet. It's like, I'm glad.
If Mr. Mullen had met with them and could give us a recommendation based on whatever his impression is, I could vote on this. I'm, I'm, right now, as I said, um, I can't vote on this because I don't know.
I understand.
I look at Mr. Mullen sort of as a neutral party. Let me put it that way. Uh,
Yeah, no, I, I see that they're requesting a thirty percent increase in salary.
Uh, yeah, I do too.
That's, that's pretty high. Uh, so I'm still staying with the motion as before.
If I, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Of course, sir.
I have an email from, from Todd Pilling yesterday.
Sure.
Accordingly, uh, according to him, the Board of Health had voted to adjust their budgets to account for only a two percent raise. I didn't change the initial request. I think the initial request was before.
Yeah, he couldn't. So this bring, it brings up a big conversation we had, and now I understand from when we met. It was myself, Mr. Pilling, Mrs. Grassi, and, um, uh, Mr. Pyers, who is not the chair, but was the Board of Health representative. And Mr. Pilling, we said at that time, I said, I cannot support the sixteen thousand dollar increase. I hope you understand. We talked it out. And he had said to me that, um, they couldn't, the Board of Health had already approved it. He couldn't just unilaterally, unilaterally go back and change it. Um, so it makes sense. It sounds like what they did was go back and change their request for that particular budget line to match the two percent that I had advocated for in my town administrator recommendations.
And just, just, well, sorry, just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Okay, sir.
Based on that email, I did not go back in and change the, the departmental request be, because that was their original departmental request.
Correct.
When I, you know, when we put this together for you, but I'm certainly, I'm, I'm more than happy to change it now to match the, you know, the, the town administrator's request at the two percent.
As long as the Board of Health did vote and the majority voted to change that line, then I think we can change it in the master budget.
Okay. All right. I can check with them tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Goulart, does that help you at all? You have the floor.
Well, if he's going to check with them tomorrow, how do we vote on this tonight?
Because we have the email. He's just confirming. I, I'm going to be honest, I'm never going to vote for the sixteen thousand dollar increase, no matter what. So even if they came back and said, we stand by the request, or we don't stand by the request, for me personally, as one out of three votes, I'm just not gonna, I'm going to stand by the recommendation.
What's the number, Chris, what is the number we should be looking at?
We should be looking at the fifty-five, seven ninety-four. That's what Todd is recommending. That, that's what Todd is saying the Board of Health voted. It's actually more than a two percent increase over the fiscal twenty-one. It's more like a three percent increase, uh, just based on my mathematics.
No, I think I took, I did like literally his salary times one, you know, one point oh two, and that's what I got.
So is it one point oh two or two percent? What am I missing here?
Well, no, that is two percent. It's just a mathematical way of calculating it. It's fit.
Line fifty-one oh six, are we talking agents singular? Who's agents?
That's a typo.
Right, alright.
But you are correct, Mr. Laviollet.
Yeah, so the fifty-five, seven ninety-four comes out to two point nine two percent.
You are correct.
If we take, if it's a flat two percent, I'm calculating fifty-five thousand, two ninety-three, eighty-three.
That's what I got, sir. Lord knows what calculator I was using last time. My apologies.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
What's the new total?
Fifty-five thousand.
No, no, what's the no total? It's not sixty-three, seven.
Oh, on the, sorry, excuse me, on the departmental request. I'm going to change it to the town administrator's recommendation of fifty-five, seven ninety-four right now.
Thank you. And then you'll give us the total number?
New, new do, new number will now match the town administrator's recommendation of sixty-three thousand, seven twenty-one, thirty-three.
But the thing is, what she's asking, I know exactly what you mean.
I'm sorry.
We need to change it to be the correct number, which is fifty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-three cents. That's what fifty-one oh six should read. I'm changing my recommendation right now.
Okay.
Alright, so the number, scratch out fifty-five, seven ninety-four, seventeen, insert fifty-five, two ninety-three, eighty-three. What's the new department total?
Sixty-three thousand, two twenty-nine-nine.
Yes.
Okay, so, um,
Can you zoom in on that? I can't see anything on this screen.
Sorry.
It's like, no one can see anything. It's not.
Hey, I can. I don't know. I'm the only one.
Not even like legible. It's like, it's not even English.
I can see it.
That better, but.
Read it, though? I can't read anything on there.
Yeah, I can see it.
Numbers.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. It's sixty-three, two, what's the total?
Sixty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine ninety-nine.
Okay, wait, hold on. Selectman Pacheco.
Yeah, it's sixty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty and ninety-nine cents is the new figure.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, um,
We had a motion in a second at the higher figure.
Yeah, Brett, you want to withdraw your second?
Second, yep.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, let's start over again then.
A motion on account number five-ten, Board of Health Regulation Inspections, adopting the recommendation of the town administrator in a total amount of sixty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Laviollet, you have saved me a bunch of times. Thank you for the correction on the percentage increase.
You're welcome.
And is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Mr. Chairman, Department five-nine, five-one-nine, Board of Health Administration. Department request is seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred, three dollars, thirty cents. Town administrator recommendation, seventy-four thousand, eighty-six dollars, twenty-five cents. And the FY twenty-one budget was seventy-two thousand, seven fifty-six, fifty-nine.
And my, oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. There is a highlighted part, so I just wanted to ask, as I always do, did we get clarity on fifty-one fifteen?
Yes, in that same email, Mr. Chairman.
Uh-huh.
The, the town administrator's recommend date, recommended amount, the forty-nine, three seventy-six, twenty-five is also the number that the Board of Health is, is now recommending in their request.
And that's per the CBA. Did I do my math correctly?
Let's fit, let's, let's check this right now.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Actually, it's slightly less than two percent.
Okay.
But that's also affected by, sorry, there, there is a departmental longevity or, or, or there's a longevity figure that's fact, that factors into that percentage increase right now.
Okay, so do you have a correct final figure to insert that I can insert or we can insert under?
Yeah, so the Board of Health, the Board of Health is, is requesting forty-nine thousand, three seventy-six, twenty-five. That's, uh, twenty-seven dollars an hour, times thirty-five hours, times fifty-two and a quarter weeks.
Okay. I, for me, that solves the issue of discrepancy.
Uh, Chris, just one question quick. One quick question, Mr. Laviollet, does that conform with the collective bargaining agreement?
I'm so, sorry, Mike, ask your question again.
So, yeah, that rate, does that conform with the collective bargaining agreement? Have we checked it against?
Um, let me check right now for you.
And I believe that the assistant town accountant did look into this for me before she left, before she retired. So I do think that this figure is accurate.
Okay.
In the TA recommendation, what had happened in the departmental recommendation is, as we know, there was like a request to evaluate the position. We all know the history, and I just informed them that none of, there's been no change, like the board hasn't changed anything. You cannot just request any number or any percent, like we have to go by the collective bargaining agreement. So I'm glad to hear that they did change their requests.
Yes, and the twenty-seven dollars is correct for the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you, sir.
So my question is, uh, there, the chairman and the members of the Board of Health requesting a two percent increase, which we haven't been giving, and it's like that. So the recommendation of the town administrator is correct, I believe, the figure.
Yes, my, thank you, uh, Selectman Pacheco. Yes, my calculations are without the two percent.
Yep.
Just for, to be consistent.
Yep. So I'm going to make an emotion, uh, I'll make a motion on account number five-nineteen, the Board of Health Administration, that we adopted, uh, town administrator's recommendation of seventy-four thousand, eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? And again, thank you to Mr. Mullen and to Mr. Laviollet for their assistance and to the Board of Health. Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Mr. Chairman, Department five hundred forty-one, the Council on Aging. They requested for FY twenty-two, a hundred, five thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, sixty cents. That's what the TA recommended. And FY twenty-one, their budget was a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and four cents. So there is a net decrease of two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars, forty-four cents.
Can I ask you a question, though, or for anyone? And I feel like we double-checked and triple-checked all the salary figures in this budget and the next budget. But I just want to make sure before we vote. I see decreases in fifty-one oh five, and I just want to make sure that we don't shortchange someone. So it comes out to be an increase due to prime time, correct? Yes, okay, just making sure, because the building commissioner, as I had told the board, gave himself like a one and a half percent. I just want to make sure we're giving people the correct amount, so we don't have to re-vote anything.
Did we give, did we give all department heads two percent?
Yes, there were, and it, again, these were based on performance evaluations, and the performance evaluations, for the most part, were good. So, um, yes. Long story short.
So I'll make an emotion, I'll make a motion on account number five forty-one, somebody's changing on me, Council on Aging. Department request as well as the town administrator's request of one hundred and five thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I also want to remind the board, the Council on Aging recently bought, or primetime, primetime Council on Aging recently purchased my senior center software, which will help them keep track of things, um, keep track of their clients, especially as things go, um, post-pandemic, let's say. Um, and I just wanted to let you know that cost for that software, that recurring cost is in data processing, not in the Council on Aging's budget, okay?
Okay.
Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Department five forty-two, primetime. Budgeted.
I think the numbers at the bottom aren't anything. I got confused by them too, I'm sorry.
I'll block those out. FY twenty-two department request, seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars, eighty-one cents. Town administrator recommended sixty-nine thousand, seventy-one dollars and eighty-one cents. And the FY twenty-one budget was seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and one cent.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
So just so you know, Selectman Goulart and Selectman Pacheco, and then we'll go to Mr. Laviollet. I didn't make a recommendation on the salary. That's the difference between the departmental request and the TA recommendation. Because I wasn't sure at the time if the, I just needed to double-check the figure of the accuracy of the number. So that's what I wanted to do with accounting. So, Mr. Laviollet.
If I may, yeah, so let me pull up. So going back to Department five-four, let's see, um, the position is split between five forty-one and five forty-two, the assistant to the assistant manager. So the total salary for the position is forty-one thousand, four seventy-two, ninety. You've, but we've, uh, we've budgeted thirty-three thousand, three ninety and five forty-one.
Okay.
The town, town administrator's recommendation should be eight thousand, eighty-two dollars and ninety cents in Department five forty-two for that budget.
Eight zero, eight two, nine zero.
That's correct.
You're on the money. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So that new total then is?
Seventy, seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-one cents.
Seventy-seven, one fifty-four, seventy-one.
Alright.
Is there a motion?
Oh, can somebody explain to me the increase in fifty-one oh five salary director of ten point two nine percent?
Yeah, Ken, it's just, it's a, it's a mathematical between five forty-two and five forty-one. If you go back to five forty-one, Mike, for a second, you can see he's actually taking a slight cut in pay uh, in that department. We're putting more of her pay in five forty-two right now.
But, but you have to answer his question. So to bring it all home, if you look at the salary, fifty thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars, sixty cents, plus fourteen thousand, sixty-two dollars and eighty cents. fifty thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars sixty cents plus fourteen thousand sixty-two dollars and eighty cents, one thousand three hundred twelve dollars and fifty-eight cents is two percent. It's a bit of an illusion.
Okay.
I know it's crazy, I totally agree, but if you think sixty thousand times two is twelve hundred, so it's two percent, she makes more than that, you know, I'm off by a little, but, um, it ends up being.
Thousand times two is a hundred and twenty thousand.
I mean, six, I'm sorry, I'm taking like, I'm taking a percent, the one percent, so it'd be six hundred times two, twelve hundred, does that make sense? Like, does that make more sense than what's written here? See, this is the problem when you split things into two different, right? It get, you have to do a little bit of math to figure out what the actual raw total increase is over the next year, so I totally understand, Selectman Pacheco.
Was there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion on account number five forty-two, primetime, uh, that we approved the budget of seventy-seven thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart, your vote.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Chairman, Department five forty-three, Veteran Services. FY twenty-two, Departmental Request, a hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars seventy-five cents. Uh, that's what the, uh, TA recommended. And the FY twenty-one budget was just slightly lower at one hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-four cents.
I have one question, and it's literally for anyone on this call who can answer it. Why does it say in fifty-one oh five, FY nineteen eighteen hours? And then this, it says that it's fourteen hours right now, so I just wanna make sure. They're working eighteen hours a week, correct? Cause I recall the board did approve hours increase maybe a year ago, maybe two years ago? No, I'm, I just wanna make sure that we have a new Veterans Agent coming in, and I wanna make sure we understand how many hours this, um, Mr. Hague should work, et cetera, et cetera, that's all.
Yeah, sorry, great, if I may, so we, Mr. Her, we were paying Mr. Hershey for eighteen hours a week.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm under the impression that the, the current salary that, that we're recommending is also based on eighteen hours a week?
Can we just change fifty-one oh five to say it's, it's eighteen hours? I don't know why it says fourteen, it's confusing to me.
Actually, it's in, yeah, it's, it's in parentheses, all right, I'll do, nevermind, I can do that now.
That messed you up, Chris?
Yes. Did you want the floor, sir?
If I may, then I'll make that, I'll make that change on both worksheets, hang on.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
And so the real total is, correct, one hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents?
I have one thirty-three, nine seventy-nine, seventy-five?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion that on Department Account Number five forty-three, Veteran Services, that we adopt the, uh, request, Department's request of one hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart, your vote.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco, sir.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Uh, Department five forty-nine, the Commission on Disability. The departmental FY twenty-two request is twenty-four thousand four hundred twenty dollars. The TA recommends eight thousand seventy dollars, and the FY twenty-one budget was two thousand dollars.
Now, I, I got a text from, uh, the ADA Coordinator, I understand that Mr. Mullen's gonna ask that this be continued? Are you, are you meeting with Jen and the ADA Coordinator, is that correct?
So, so, yes, I met, uh, with the ADA Coordinator this afternoon. Um, and as you will, like, as you can see, the, the COD request um, is significantly, um, higher, uh, than what the TA recommendation, uh, is, um, at this point. I did want to I get a sense of the board, uh, you know, where and how the board wanted to go with this budget.
Um, I feel like you're pausing for me, so I will fill, fill the void. Um, I'm gonna be honest, I put these numbers in here, this is for Selectman Goulart and Selectman Pacheco, and then at the end of my meeting with ADA Coordinator Gail and Ms. Duchkowski, who is a representative from the COD, I deleted them, and I said, I really just think Mike, excuse me, Town Administrator Mullen should be allowed to come in, and he can think about what he feels is the best way forward. What I will tell you is, there's a couple things that are sort of non-negotiable on here. So the first thing is fifty-five eighty, other supplies, auxiliary aids, as long as our, um, and he should be, and I'm very proud that he's our COD Coordinator, as long as Mr. Gail, who is vision impaired, is our COD Coordinator, we need to have the auxiliary aids in there. And I believe that's a requirement under Title II, I could be wrong. But that's the way it was explained to me, so for me, that takes that line off the table, that has to be in there. The reason I initially put three thousand dollars, and this is just for my colleagues, is that was the original request, I believe, and so, not knowing how my other colleagues feel, and I know, Selectman Pacheco, you work a lot closer with the COD than I do, um, I just kinda put it in there as a filler, honestly. So I just wanted you to know where I was coming from, um, and, um, I really just wanted to get a sense of the board um, in terms of what they felt, um, was needed in terms of funding. And we do have public input, but I, I wanna just go to my colleagues first.
Sure, so if I can speak first, I, I definitely feel that the ADA Coordinator stipend should be increased. Uh, we can talk about what that figure should be. If you remember, when this Chris became, uh, before the, uh, Town, at a special town meeting, I believe it was in October, not this past October, the year before. The initial request was two hundred and fifty dollars a month for eight, twelve months, that would be three thousand dollars, but because we had eight months left in that fiscal year, I reduced it to two thousand dollars, because we only wanted money for eight months and not twelve months. So when, and it was approved by the Town. When it came before the Finance Committee the following year, they didn't, not wanna increase it to the original three thousand dollars, they were staying with that two thousand dollars. And I explained to them, as I explained to the townspeople, as I explained to the board, that the initial request was three thousand, but I reduced it to two thousand, because why put in the budget an additional thousand dollars that we're not going to spend? But they did not agree to that, so the, uh, Town ended up, uh, voting for the two thousand dollars. Uh, so I definitely feel that the ADA Coordinator, uh, salary should, uh, stipend should be increased. He needs to be here to explain to the, everybody, what his, uh, why he's making that request. We can debate it, we can discuss it, I understand we're in a serious fiscal situation. Uh, so that has to be taken into consideration, but I definitely feel uh, that it should be an increase and, and increase more than the original three thousand dollars that I had proposed way back when.
Thank you, sir. Understood. And I respect your opinion, I know you work closely with them, I know you're very intimate with the work that they're doing, um, and I know they're doing a lot, so, um, I really respect your opinion on this, Selectman Goulart.
Um, yeah, I remember what, um, Selectman Pacheco talked about, and I remember the FinCon meeting and all that. Um, I don't have a problem increasing it, uh, some, but not the kind of numbers I'm looking at here.
Understood. Yep, I understand, I feel the same way.
Should we, um, how do you feel about taking this one under advisement and having the, uh, have Mr. Gail come?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I, yeah, I'm in agreement with that, I think Mr. Mullen just wanted the, uh, wanted to know what the board felt about this.
Yeah.
And I believe there, there are a couple of members of the Commission on Disability that may wanna speak on this, I'm not sure if they do, I see a hand up.
Yeah, before we act, um, I'm, before I even entertain any motions, we will definitely hear the public input. Mr. Smith, sir, you've been busy, I'm gonna lower your hand. Um, do you mind just giving your name and your address before you provide your input, sir?
Uh, Kevin Smith, Jr., eleven forty-seven Center Street. I just wanted to speak real briefly on, as a member of the Commission on Disability, um, we've gone back and forth and discussed this budget increase, and one thing I just wanna shine a light on for the board is the extensive nature of the KMA report, and the amount of work that needs to be done to make the necessary improvements throughout town. Um, we've already started working quite a bit on, um, variances for different pieces of town property, and then working towards grants to make improvements to Town Hall. So I think, I agree with everyone, and I'm glad that you guys will continue and have more of a conversation with Mr. Gail, um, as he can provide more input. But I, I just want everybody to be aware that there is an extensive amount of work, so an, uh, increase of some kind is different, definitely warranted.
Thank you, sir, um, I, I will tell you, and since you're, you're on the call, my real hesitation with making a recommendation in that Town Administrator Recommendation column, and I'll be very honest, was the way it was described to me, is that we were going from a stipended position to, um, they had all this math done about like how many hours it would be, and to me, that's a bigger change, because now, if you're working actual hours, and you're, like, you need office space, like, it's a, it's an actual position, just like the Assistant Town Accountant, I'm just giving a bad example, but, just like that, um. So that was honestly my hesitation, it wasn't that I don't see the need, it wasn't that I don't think, um, it's important, and it's something that we should be doing and need to be doing, um, it was more, I felt like I needed input from someone who is a professional in this field, like Mr. Mullen, um, who probably has experience with this, um, more than I do, um, in guiding us in what that final number is and what it entails, is it a stipend? Is it hours per week, and it's a, it's a flat rate, like our conservation agent gets, for example? Those were my questions, so I'm glad that we're gonna continue the conversation, and possibly get even more clarity, both from the COD Coordinator, and also, um, from Mr. Mullen as well.
Can I ask one additional question in regards to this item?
Of course you can.
Um, so, in, with what you just said, um, is this an item that you feel like the Town would maybe move towards it being an official position versus how it's listed as just the Coordinator? And is that something that would need to go to Town Vote in the annual, or a special town meeting to get created and then funded?
I think the question of whether, I don't know, I'm gonna defer to you, Selectman Goulart, on this one, I'm sorry, I'm not kicking the can down the road, I don't really know, I know the funding always runs through the Town Meeting, the people get to say where the money goes, um, in terms of the crew, like, if it's a position at Town Hall, I'm not sure about, like, how that, that all comes about, Selectman Goulart, do you have any insight?
I don't believe at this point, this is a position meaning like an employee, because there is a committee that this person chairs. So I will equate this position, having a committee to assist to the Stormwater Committee, okay? If I were not a selectman and had been appointed to the Stormwater Committee and had a stipend, I would be expected to provide leadership for the Stormwater Committee and make sure everything that had to be done to meet the requirements of the, uh, Notice of Intent and the MS4 and all that good stuff, got done. I think right now, this is not a per se paid position like an employee. It's not like a stormwater agent, it's not like a health agent, those truly are town positions, they've got benefits and all that other good stuff with them. So I think what we have to look at is, uh, the first thing we'd have to determine is, are we going to create a truly employee position that would be, um, the, um, we probably wouldn't call him the Coordinator, and it wouldn't be a stipend, but it would have, it would have a name to it, okay? So once that's determined, then the next thing you do is, if you're gonna create a position, then you've gotta put the salary with it, it's no longer a stipend, okay? So that's what, I think that's what we'd have to be looking at, and I think it's important that uh, Mr. Gail weigh in on this, um, as far as where he sees this position going. But that, that would be my thought, if, all right, so equating it to the Storm, Stormwater Committee. If I were to leave the Stormwater Committee, not doing that anymore, period, over and done with, uh, the way that committee is structured right now, um, the Board of Selectmen would have to appoint a member from its board to serve. So that's how I got on the committee. If the Board of Selectmen chose not to do that, and said, you know what, we really need somebody to take this over and uh, do more than just leadership, they've really, as the Stormwater Program requirements grows, we need somebody to take this over. That's at the point that the, the selectman would say, should we create a position? Meaning like an employee position, so that, that's how I'm looking at these two things, because they both have a lot of responsibility.
So I, I just want, oh, we have a lot of background, I don't know where that's coming from. Um, I just wanted to add, uh, that my understanding, and I, I had a misconception um, during my conversation with the COD Coordinator and Ms. Duchkowski, I was under the impression, um, that the Commission is literally helping the COD Coordinator do his job, and I was, I didn't understand that correctly, obviously. Um, it, it's not like there's five people to help the COD Coordinator in, in the duties that they're doing. Um, it's more like they're giving input on the different grants and things like that, that are before, um, the Town in terms of, um, ADA compliance and accessibility. So I did just wanna add that for the record. Um, we do have more public input, Mr. Woods, if you don't mind just, um, stating your address and your name.
Robert Woods, one five H A Street. And I, I've been attending all their meetings, the ADA Commission's meetings, and I was at their last, um, budget meeting. And they were trying to compare Jonathan's salary to the Veterans Agent's salary, and the comparison was like comparing apples to oranges, in my opinion, and I said that at their meeting. And I asked the committee that if they could look into the surrounding communities, and how much they pay their ADA Coordinator, um, such as Berkeley, Free Town, Reholbeth. And, and, you know, I've been around a while, and I know when people start comparing salaries to other towns, they like to look at Dartmouth and Fairhaven, those are much bigger communities. And, and I really do, and I have complimented them many times on the work that they're doing, they're doing some outstanding work. And I'm very appreciative, because myself, I'm disabled also. Um, but you know, a, and you hear the slogan around the, the small town with the big hut. There are a lot of people that do a lot of work for the Town of Dayton for absolutely zero. I've served on many boards and many committees without any pay at all. Um, and this position is just starting to morph into, uh, like Mr. Smith was referring to, as a job. You know, we only have so much money to deal with in the town, and there are gonna be other positions that need to come up, you know, such as a town planner. A, a, and that's a, another high-paying job, but, you know, the, the way the town is growing, we have to think of these things, we have to think of where we can save money and where we need to spend money that is beneficial. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir, before we go to Ms. Tavares, I did just wanna add, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Woods. Um, what, I, I have been talking about a town planner since Mrs. Baki was the Planning Board Office Manager. Um, it's not, obviously, come to fruition, um, but I totally take your point, um, and it will be something that I think about, um, when I go to make a recommendation, or my vote for a recommendation on that budget, so I do appreciate that, sir. Ms. Tavares, our lovely and fabulous and hard-working, uh, Executive Director of the Dayton Public Library. If you don't mind, uh, just stating your name and your address, even though I don't think you live in Dayton, but that is.
No, no. I, I am, uh, two thirty-seven Adamsville Road in Westport, and the Director of the Dayton Public Library, but I also serve on the, um, ADA Commission. And I, just on the point of. And I just on the point of the. Um, stipend salary or compensation for Mr. Gale. One of the issues that compelled us to approach that. Is the amount of personal information that he would be working with for town residents in need of his services. That he would have access to and help be um. Working with to help those residents, those town residents with specific needs. And the amount of knowledge that he has in connecting people to that. To those resources and that specialized knowledge that he does have. We are estimating. That on average, he would be putting in about ten hours of work a week. And um I just did a quick. A quick search and came up with a Bureau of Labor Statistic. Salary rate of thirty dollars an hour. For um someone who is the. A- an ADA Coordinator. I think I I don't remember everything. I'd have to go back and look, but um I think that was about the amount. We had estimated. So I I just wanted to offer some of the other backgrounds being um a com- a. Commission member. I don't know if um. Kevin or Ken have that memory as well, but.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you. And all you do.
Mister Lennon Hull has a question? In the chat room, Lennon Hull?
Yes, Mister Hulls um of Main Street asked, how does this stipend request compared to that of other towns of Dayton's size and population? I I will be honest, in my research, Mister Hull a- and for the public, um. Most of the research I did, either the Town Administrator or a member of the Board of Selectmen was the ADA Coordinator and they didn't. Get a stipen- a separate stipend for that. However. Dayton, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, just one person, um, we're behind the ball. We're behind the curve and we really do need someone. And I'm not making a judgment on hours or sa- I'm not talking about that at all. I'm just talking in generality. We do need someone who can coordinate. Becoming ADA compliant. Um, I I will say if someone were to say Brett Zagrafos, you're gonna be the. ADA Coordinator, I couldn't do it. I don't know. I don't know the laws. I don't have the time. Um, and I suspect if we ask Mister Mullen, even though he probably does have more familiarity with. Um, ADA compliance than certainly I do as a Norfolk County Administrator. I mean, I I would assume that he doesn't have the time. Um, just knowing the amount of work that I had to do in the last four months before he arrived. Um, I don't think there's the time. So that's that's my answer in a nutshell and and I apologize if that's, you know, not the best answer.
Well, I.
Yeah, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At the ADA meeting, this discussion came up. And I'm going to be pretty consistent in my response. Uh, as you just mentioned, the town is. Behind in ADA compliance. And we have some significant ADA work being done. Sidewalks and curb cuts. And definitely a need for someone to oversee that, to make sure that that work is done. And what Mrs. Travis mentioned a minute ago is also consistent with the need. For that position's increase in time involvement as well as the salary request. It appears that that request is not. Unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And and Mister Hull, I just wanted to add, um, I I appreciate those comments. I feel the exact same way. I'm not prepared tonight anyway to make a decision on what that salary. I I know you want to use the word salary. Let me back up. What that stipend should be. Um, so I I want to continue this conversation. I also see a need. We just applied myself, Mister Gale, Mrs. Brady and Mister Ferry for a Shared Streets and Spaces grant to do more. Um, sidewalk installation, more curb cuts, uh, more ramps, more side uh crosswalk installations. Um, but I think what we're doing now is trying to figure out. What dollar value to put on that work. Um, so I totally appreciate your comments, sir.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Mister Woods, sir.
Uh, I'll be quick.
You have all the time. You you can take all the time you want, sir.
Not really.
I would just like to point out that, you know, the building commissioner. Uh, everything that goes through his office, he is quite familiar with ADA regulations on any building being built. And as to any work being done on sidewalks or anything like that, uh, already engineered. With the regulations involved, so. Um, and I I do understand that we need to be caught up, but you know, the state is not breathing down our neck.
Correct.
That's all I have.
All totally valid points, Mister Woods, all good points. I totally agree. Um. Mrs. Uh, Tavarez wrote, I appreciate the consideration that the board is taking for this. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Tavarez.
So I'm gonna make a motion.
Oh, you have the floor.
Mister Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that on account number five forty nine. Commissioner of Disability uh that we could take that budget under advisement since Mister Gale is not present.
Absolutely. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I I just want to uh kind of reiterate what was said. I was gonna say this, but um. We're talking about the ADA Commission. The ADA Commission is not a standalone. And if we're going to talk about. Um, a- additional uh duties, compensation, responsibility and all this stuff. This isn't all gonna fall on Mister Gale. If Mister Gale, if we didn't have this commission. First of all, Mister Ferry is very well qualified to determine what you do with sidewalks and streets and so forth, so on. And as Mister uh Wood said, we have a building commissioner. So when I, when you talk ADA. It's not one commission because uh one person, you you would have to bring in those other departments. So it's a shared responsibility. Just as when I talked about Stormwater, there's one chairman, but in all honesty, the people that the Board of Selectmen. The departments that they selected to serve on that committee are all. Contributors and experts in their own field who have to contribute in order for us to function properly. Uh, I may be chair, but I don't have the knowledge that all of them have. So this is similar when we talk ADA and we've got to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Selectman Goulart very much. Selectman Pacheco, did you have anything else before we take a vote?
No, I'm all, I'm all set.
Uh, my last question for my colleagues is, um, do we want to have a standalone meeting with the uh Mister Gale and maybe members of the C O D? Or like, how do we want to do this? Are we gonna do this tomorrow? Are we gonna do this next week with this, when we have that special meeting for the schools?
I think we ought to have it as part of our special meeting and and members of the um, the Commission could certainly weigh in.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Yep. Mister Mullen, does that make sense?
Yes, it does, for sure.
Thank you, sir. Just, I really just asked you to make sure we're keeping track of all these things because I will forget.
So yes, no, and thank you for the input. I mean, I'm trying to just learn and get up to speed on everything here and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course, sir. So we have a motion and a second to take this under advisement and possibly continue it next week. Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an I. Selectman Pacheco, do you mind doing the six hundreds? Do you want me to do this?
Oh, you can do it.
Okay. Oh, good. Yay. Thanks. Okay. You heard, or you had to give me this sewer enterprise fund. Thank God we have this. Okay, Sewer Enterprise Fund, um. There's really not, there's, the the requests are pretty much in line with previous years. Um, I know there was one outstanding concern regarding. Health insurance and Mister Mullen, not to put you on the spot, and we don't need to go into details. Did that get resolved at all?
Uh, yes, it did. Uh, yes, it did. What the issue was, and I thought when I looked at this earlier, Mister Chair. Uh, there was a departmental request and uh and a TA recommendation here as well. And so after that, I will. Maybe it's on the master sheet that um actually goes forward. But there was a question about like FY twenty one, like. Oh, like actually indirect cost. Um, and we talked, we spoke to the Sewer Department. As well as uh the Town Treasurer. And we worked out a plan to deal with that. So that is all dealt with at this point. But to be honest with you, I don't. Have any idea why we. Uh, yes, okay, I'm sorry. So wait. If we could table this because we. We see the enterprise fund totals. But I need uh Chris's help. In terms of actually, uh, you know, coming up with the grand total of the combined. General Fund and Sewer Enterprise number, if that makes sense, as you could see right here and right here.
I have no issue taking this under advisement, colleagues.
I'm gonna make a motion to take Department Account Number six hundred Sewer Enterprise Fund under advisement.
Second.
We have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an I. Under Library, we do have, Mrs. Tavarez is still here. Thank you for being patient, Mrs. Tavarez. Um. We, I'm trying to look for the key highlights. Uh, there's a materials requirement per the Massachusetts. Um, MBLC um in fifty-five, ten books and magazines. Um, that's the four percent increase there. Everything else is pretty much the same, more or less. I mean, there's the. The only thing I want to ask you, Mrs. Tavarez, if you're on the line.
I'm here.
Is that salary correct? Is that, why is it negative point four two percent?
Um, our schedules at the library are not a consistent equal amount of days. So the way that the calendar is, it just ended up that. Mine, because of the way the days fell, I just had a little under amount. That's all. It wasn't really, it's not really an under amount. It's just the way the calendar.
Okay, I I think I understand what you're saying. It's less date, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
So are you saying you got two percent, but because there were less days, the number went down?
Right.
It looks less, yeah. Selectman Pacheco?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why other departments, that didn't happen.
Because of the way that their days fall.
Can we go back to the first, uh, no? No, I understand. As long as you get into two percent, uh, Mister Vars, I'm I'm okay with that.
That was my concern, Mrs. Tavarez.
Um, I had one question. Um, uh, we had, um. I think it was the last selectments meeting, you had asked permission for um. The spending that, you know, um, what do we call it? Doctor Z.
It was digital resources.
No, no. What do we call that on the agenda?
I'm trying to like, I'm trying, I can't even like, talking about, what is that?
discretionary, yes.
Spending request, you're right.
Yes. So my question, uh, Mrs. Tavarez is. Uh, you asked us for that because prices had increased in the proposed FY twenty-two budget. Have you taken into consideration there was an increase in price? Uh, this year and it's now you've well allotted for that next year?
Yes, no, that's. That's in the formula. That's.
Okay.
You rock, Mrs. Tavarez. I have no um further questions, but I will give the floor to my colleagues if you have any.
I'll make a motion that Department Account Number six ten, Library. That we approve the request of two hundred seventy thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I did want to tell you, Mrs. Tavarez, I wanted to thank you for being patient. I know it's been stressful for everyone, obviously residents, the staff at the. Dayton Public Library. I know there's work that needs to be done over there. Um, and I promise that as soon as our Town Administrator. It had, is situated and the Building Commissioner completes. His work, I believe by April fifth on the upstairs of Town Hall, there might be more work to do. But we will get rocking and rolling on that. I know we need to go out to bid for a general contractor. It is on my radar and I, it's not gonna slip through the cracks, okay?
All right, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Hold me accountable on that. No, I'm just kidding. Don't really do it.
There's a, there's a target on your back. It's all right.
Oh, I love our employees.
Question if I could.
Yeah.
What the board approved was a departmental request that was lower than the TA recommendation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We're smart. We're a smart bunch. Um, before we take the vote, I did just want to let you know that. Um, and it is on my radar and I will be in touch, okay?
Okay.
All right. Selectman Goulart, before we vote, yep, you have the floor.
Mike, what did you just say?
Yeah, the vote was on the FY twenty-two departmental request of. Two hundred seventy thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and sixty-six cents. Rather than the TA recommendation of two seventy-two thousand dollars, duh. Two seventy-two, duh, oh my God, I can't speak. Two seven two zero one three sixty-six. But the difference is, uh, going back up to the, to the librarian's salary.
Yeah, I, my math was bad. You can just say it.
No, it's all right. It's all right.
I'm not an accountant. I'm sorry.
Um, just, Mrs. Tavarez, just to reiterate. Is that salary correct? I know I just explained it with days and two percent, but. Is that, is the, is the departmental request?
I didn't, everyone is fine. We're, we're fine, yes.
Okay.
I'm happy with it.
Okay. All right. I can understand why Mister Mullen questioned.
I think he's as shocked as we are, as I am.
Okay.
Is there any, anything else under this item before we take a vote? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also I. Next on the agenda, Mrs. Carr, as always, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate all you do.
Good night. Mister Chairman, just clarification.
Sure.
The vote, the vote for the library, you voted based on the departmental request and not the TA's request or recommendation, correct?
Yes.
Went with the accurate request.
No, it's, it's.
I don't think it's right.
So under Parks and Rec Account Number, oh, I'm sorry, did you have another question about the library, Mister Laviala?
Um, I'm I'm still concerned about Jocelyn's salary request. It doesn't um.
Can we put this on the agenda for the, that next meeting next week? We'll revisit this and do a little bit more digging, just to be sure.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
We have many.
Withdraw the second.
Okay, Selectman Pacheco?
I want to stay with my motion. No, I'll. I will draw the motion.
Okay, motion that we defer action on this till the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is an I. And again, this is just to make sure that the salary figures we're approving are accurate. Due diligence. Under six thirty, Parks and Recreation. Um, I know it's, it's shows blank. That's because, again, we never received a budget, but. I thought that I had copy and pasted FY twenty-one. And that's what I was gonna recommend under, or what I did recommend, I think, under TA recommendations. Um. Does anyone have any questions on this, comments?
Yeah, who's the Chair of the Parks and Rec?
I believe it's Mister Rosa.
So he didn't give us, he didn't give us the budget?
No, I actually, um, in all fairness, I reached out to not just him, I reached out to all three members. I reached out to Mrs. Cody, Mister Rosa and Mister Rhines. Um, via email several times and they. And they basically said the chair does the budget and I, I understand that. Um, I never received anything, so, but I don't think it's fair. Again, like, I know we didn't give zero for the zoning board because they need money. I feel like if, if I were to put nothing in here, the people that get penalized aren't the people who didn't do the budget or the person that didn't do the budget. It's the residents if we put nothing in here. So I think that's why my recommendation was to level fund.
So, so my question is then, the, what they've spent so far in fiscal year twenty twenty-one is thirty dollars and fifty cents out of a budget of twenty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, through December thirty-first, Ken, that is correct.
Yes. Well, that's a little troubling.
Yeah, but we've had COVID. This budget would have been prepared prior to COVID. I think it would got, gotten approved at the town meeting when we had, we're dealing with COVID. But the kind of activities they would have scheduled, I think have all been scrapped.
So.
I'm not even just thinking about, I understand the event should be scrapped because it wasn't safe to have them. However, what I'm thinking about is, we're in a pande, we weren't, we're still in a pandemic. It was a lot worse, you know, in the beginning especially, um, and in the fall. But that, to me, is the time when you start replacing equipment and doing all that stuff is when people really need the parks and recreational spaces, like right now. Um, so yes, I understand the event should be canceled, but, you know, we could still work on other things together. Did, colleagues, we have public input. Did you have anything else?
I'm willing to make a motion that we level funded at twenty-three thousand, one hundred for the upcoming year and hope that things can be done. That, my concern is that the population we would most affect are the youngest people in this town.
Yeah, my point is that I'm disappointed in the chairman of the Parks and Rec didn't provide any budget. I understand there was a pandemic. We all understand that, but there was no budget presented. And I'll make a second, but I believe Mr. Woods wants to speak on.
I was gonna, I wasn't gonna vote without calling on him.
Sorry, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, sir. You have the floor, Mr. Woods.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I, I'm not sticking up for anybody on Park and Rec, but as you all know, I was on Park and Rec for about nine, nine years. And traditionally, the budget, and the finance committee and Ed Swartz knows this. Usually the bulk of the money is spent at the end of the fiscal year. Um, and that goes back for, for years because, you know, we used to have programs, they, they didn't have any programs because of the pandemic, but we would have to pay instructors and, um, you know, have things fixed, maintenance. And then whatever was left at the end of the year, we would look at all the other playgrounds to see what was needed and how much money was left in the budget. And, you know, I, I'm sure Nancy remembers way back when we had to encompass some funds to order some, you know, a substantial amount of playground equipment, so I would take Nancy's recommendation and level fund this budget um, for the mere fact that none was presented. But the bulk of the money was always left over and the town accountant, Jen Louise, used to eyeball that money, hoping that we were gonna leave it there, you know, then they could do an end of the year transfer, but we always spent down. And sometimes we overspent and looked for a transfer, depending on the severity of the equipment that needed to be replaced. So, I, you know, I'm not sticking up for them. They're not here to represent themselves. Shame on them. But uh, here it is for the children and that's why I'm speaking up.
Mr. Woods, I a hundred percent agree and, and that's why I think we should, at the very least, just my, again, one vote out of three, personal opinion. The people that would, if we put zero in there, the people that are affected are kids, residents, not, you know, commissioners. So, um, you know, you don't want to bite your nose to spite your face and, on this one at least, um.
My only, my point was that the chairman did not present a budget. I'm in favor of the budget. I'm not opposed to the budget. And I'm disappointed that the chairman didn't think it was important enough to present a budget to the select board, for the selecting.
Yeah.
I, I'm supporting it.
Yeah, I understand that too, but um, I will also say, excuse me, if I were a member of that commission, you know what? I'll back it up to the Board of Selectmen. If the chairman of our committee, of the Board of Selectmen didn't submit a budget, my feeling is there's still two members on this Board of Selectmen and they should get together and put a budget together. There are two other members on that committee and if, if the answer was, I'm not the chairman, I'm not doing it. Uh, to me, that's not acceptable. It's a committee. It's a commission. And you have to look at the population you serve. And this particular commission, as I said, serves the smallest, and I don't mean population, the youngest, the smallest residents in this community. Somebody should have stepped up, period. And, and that's why I made the motion to level fund it.
I totally agree with you, Selectman Goulart, but to Selectman Pacheco's point, we all know, rule one oh one of commissions, boards, committees, who calls the meeting? Who's the only person that can call the meeting? We know it's the chair, so if the chair is absent or unwilling to do the difficult work, you know, if I was incapacitated, you know, the, there is a system where the clerk could call the meeting. So I don't know enough about Parks and Rec to know, like, who's the clerk. I just know who the chair is, so I could reach out to them for budget season. Um, but again, at the end of the day, the kids need parks now more than ever. So I'm gonna support at the very least level funding it. And I did want to go, Mr. Ferry, I know you had your hand up. You did retract it. If you would like to speak, you have the floor, sir.
I just want to assure you that with the regular maintenance system by the Howard Department, that will continually grasp, be trimmed, and take care of any immediate safety concerns on the Pla, Parks and Rec's equipment. And I concur with the way the discussion's going. Um, I'd like to, I recommend that it would be level funded to give them access for some equipment that does need, need to be replaced at the end of the fiscal.
Thank you, sir. I agree. So we have, I believe, a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion on this? I don't want to cut anyone off. Hearing none. Selectman Goulart, your vote.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco, sir.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. And thank you to everyone who provided input. I think we arrived at the right uh, place. Next is the town historian. This is always level, at least since I've been here, I shouldn't say always. It's always been two hundred fifty dollars. It never usually gets expended, so I will entertain motions regarding this budget.
I'll make a motion on account number six ninety, town historian, that we approve the budget of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. Six ninety-one is next, historical commission. This is, again, level funded at two thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-two. Any uh, input? And if not, I will entertain motions.
How come the TA didn't make a recommendation?
I feel like I forgot to, honestly. I, I feel like anything level funded, I might have forgotten, so I.
Tsk, tsk, tsk. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the FY twenty-two budget for department six ninety-one historical commission at two thousand dollars.
I just want to point out that I'm a non-voting member of the commission, but I will second this motion.
We have a, Selectman Pacheco, do you want to retract that? I'm happy to step down in second.
I'm comf, I'm comfortable with making a second.
Okay.
Town administrator's okay with it.
All right. I like that response. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. Next is the cable committee, account six ninety-eight. They are, it looks like they are trying to level fund it based on FY twenty-one. So I will entertain motions if there's no discussion.
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion on department account number six ninety-eight cable committee, uh, that we approve the recommendation of thirty-two thousand and one hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, the TA didn't give a, a recommendation again.
Do you rec, you recommend the last two, right, Mike? Excuse me, right, Mr. Mullin?
Yes, I just did, Mr. Chairman.
All right, perfect. Thank you. I, in all fairness, off camera, I did tell him there were things I didn't make recommendations on. And I said, if you want to change anything or fill it in, you feel free.
This is true.
Thank you for vouching. Okay, um, Selectman Pacheco or Selectman Goulart, do you want to bring us home on the final budgets?
Believe me, I, I want to do that, believe me.
We are home. We just can't be away from this meeting.
You can call the vote.
It's a four-hour meeting so far, but anyway.
You're gonna call the vote?
Excuse me?
I'm, I made a motion on that and I think we got a second. You're gonna call the vote?
Selectman Goulart, this is for the committee. Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye, and it wouldn't be a Board of Selectmen's meeting without one reminder like that from you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Department seven ten, maturing principal on long-term debt. Level, no, it's not level funded.
It is.
Went up a hair. Oh, it dropped a dollar. Wait a minute.
Well, my recommendation was, was a dollar less and I don't know why. I think they changed the departmental request a dollar because it, there's no way it would be off a dollar. But it is level funded.
Um, okay, so is there a motion to approve FY twenty-two?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the uh, maturing principal on long-term debt, count number seven ten, in the amount of two hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine or?
I'd go with nine.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Uh, Department seven fifty-one, interest on long-term debt. Let's see.
Ooh, we got a decrease. We like that.
Yep. Uh, so the departmental request and the TA recommendation is a hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars. This would be based on the actual document and it will continue to decrease every year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the department account number seven fifty-one, interest on long-term debt, in the amount of one hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Department seven fifty-two, interest on short-term debt. There is nothing budgeted. We don't have any outstanding short-term borrowing at this point. We haven't done this in years, literally.
Mr. LaViolette, is this something we should do the dollar for or is that, does that only apply to like boards, committees, and commissions?
No, I mean, for your consideration, um, it, it might be prudent to consider putting something in. I don't like the, the terminology tax anticipation note interest. This would be more bond anticipation note interest and I'll, I'll, I won't bore the folks with the, the terminology. Yeah, you should probably consider putting a dollar in there, in the event that we ever had to borrow money on a short-term basis.
Did we do it for each line or just a dollar in total?
No, I think we could do it just for a dollar in total. I, I suppose it doesn't really matter which line item it actually goes into. Um, as long as there's something there, you know, for future consideration as needed.
All right.
I'm gonna make a motion on department account number seven fifty-two, interest on short-term debt in the amount of twenty-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those, I'm sorry, old habits. Selectman Pacheco, sir.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Oh, let's see. Department nine eleven, retirement and pension contributions. This is the Bristol County Retirement Assessment. Don't bother comparing it to previous years. It goes up every year. Uh, the FY twenty-two departmental request, and this would be based on actual numbers from the retirement board, eight hundred ninety thi, eight hundred ninety thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars is their motion.
Make a motion on department account number nine eleven, retirement and pension contributions, that we approve the request of eight hundred ninety thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, just for the board, just for clarification, the number that you're seeing there, that the, uh, the departmental request is actually a net figure. Um, the, the county gives us the option to make a one-time payment at the beginning of the fiscal year and they grant, they'll give us a two percent discount. So if we were to, if we were to pay it in two installments rather than one, the actual assessment is nine oh eight, one seventy-five, thirty-six. So we're actually taking an eighteen thousand dollar cut in, in the assessment by paying it all in advance. Just wanted that out there for your, for your clarification.
Thank you, sir. That's, that's good. We like that. Appreciate it. Selectman Goulart.
Um, Department nine twelve, workers.
Oh, I think we need to take a vote. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I almost moved. I said something doesn't feel right about this. Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is an aye.
Department nine twelve, workers' compensation, requested of FY twenty-two, fifty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars. That's the TA recommendation and that's up from fifty-five thousand dollars uh, in uh, FY twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Make a motion on department account number nine twelve, workers' compensation, that we approve the request of fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, I will just point out that periodically they do audits. I think they're supposed to do them every year. Sometimes they don't. But sometimes when the audit takes place, uh, we've had to come up with some additional money because of the audit. So this is the number they know about right now.
I, my last question, based on, um, my only question, based on the spending in FY twenty-one, and this is for our town accountant, it's already ninety-nine point three three percent spent as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty, so we're anticipating needing to do a year-end transfer for this?
No, no, not at all. So this is just an insurance premium that you're paying, Brett. This is not, we're not pay-as-you-go for, for workers' compensation. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Selectman Goulart.
Did we take the vote on that?
Oh, no, we didn't. You're correct. See? You do it every time and I appreciate it. Selectman Goulart, your vote.
Aye.
So I, Mrs. Brady came on the screen. I almost asked her for a vote. I'm sorry, Select.
I'd be interested in.
Yeah.
On the budget. Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Department nine fourteen, group health insurance. The requested amount for FY twenty-two is one million, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. And that is the TA recommendation and that is down uh, by about sixty-five thousand dollars over the current year.
I'll make a motion on department account number nine fourteen, group health insurance, that we approve the request, department request of one million, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. That's a decrease of sixty-five thousand plus.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Department nine fifteen, group life insurance. The request for FY twenty-two is seven hundred dollars. The TA recommendation is seven hundred dollars and this is up slightly from FY twenty-one, which was six hundred twenty-five dollars.
I'll make a motion on department account number nine fifteen, group, group life insurance, that we adopted department's request of seven hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Department nine sixteen, employer contributions. This is for Medicare. FY twenty-two request, eighty-two thousand dollars. TA recommends eighty-two thousand dollars. It's up two thousand from FY twenty-one, which was at eighty thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion on department account number nine sixteen, employer contribution, uh, that we adopt a department request of eighty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Department nine nineteen, OPEB, department request of FY twenty-two is. Department request of FY twenty-two is thirty-five thousand. The TA recommends thirty-five thousand. And the FY twenty-one request was thirty-five thousand.
I'm going to make a motion that department account number nine nineteen, OPEC, uh, that we adopted department's request of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Department nine twenty, tuition department, uh, excuse me, FY twenty-two departmental request, eighteen thousand. Where's the TA's recommendation?
That is the recommendation. I did this uh, budget myself, sorry.
Okay, um, last, the current year, we, we had, um,
Nine thousand. So the reason it's doubled is because we're actually taking into account how many people plan on taking courses and then multiplying it by the maximum per our policy that's allowed, just to make sure we have enough money when the bills come in, because we don't right now. I had to do a reserve fund transfer request and pray that the, I'm sorry, wrong word, and hope that the finance committee approves it so that the firefighters awaiting their reimbursement can be paid or reimbursed rather. Um, so basically what I did was I asked department heads this year to tell me who they think or who has expressed interest in possibly taking some kind of advanced coursework, higher education coursework. And we have two in our department, Mrs. Brady and Mrs. Kirwin expressed interest. And we have another new person. I can't off the top of my head recall, maybe Mr. Laviola. Um, and that's fabulous, but we just want to make sure that we have the funds if we're going to offer this program to people, that's all. So it looks like an increase, but really we're in the hole from the last year.
I'm going to make a motion on department account number nine twenty, tuition, uh, that we adopt, approve the request of the department of eighteen thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion under nine twenty tuition? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart, your vote.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Department nine forty, settlements. There's nothing budgeted. Uh, is this one we should put some money in? Twenty-five dollars? Chris?
Um, are you, let's put, you, you folks know better than I. Are you anticipating any settlements uh, in an upcoming fiscal year based on any litigation against the town?
No. What we've done in the past, we haven't budgeted money here or in nine forty-one. Um, and if something should happen, uh, we go to town meeting with a special, special warrant article for the exact amount of the settlement.
Uh, if I, if I, if I may, uh, just for uh, some additional information for the board, you have the option of also raising any court judgments or settlements on the tax recap, like the way we would do with the deficit for snow and ice. So you can always leave it as a raise and appropriate when you go to set the tax rate in the fiscal year that the settlement happens.
I, I think what happened was it was I'm going to guess two thousand nineteen, eighteen or nineteen, there was a, a judgment, uh, excuse me, there was a settlement, uh, out of court settlement. And um, town council just recommended that uh, it be paid. And so I think it came up at the special town meeting in the fall and we just had the warrant article. And I, we could have been, I don't believe it was raised inappropriate. I think it was transferred from free cash to tell you the truth.
And you have that, I mean, the, the board and the town have that option as well. I'm just, you know, just pointing out that, you know, there is that, there is that option to raise on the, on the recap.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we don't have to put any money in these two accounts?
No, you don't have to put, I mean, there hasn't been anything in several fiscal years. I would recommend not putting in anything in there right now.
Right. I like that.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that account nine forty settlements and account nine forty-one court judgments be left uh, as accounts, but with no uh, budgeted funding at the current time.
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart, your vote. Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye.
Account number nine forty-five, liability insurance. The FY twenty-two request is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The TA recommends a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And FY twenty-one was, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion on department account number nine forty-five, liability insurance that we adopt and approve the department request of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. Before we disconnect, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. The outstanding budgets that I have for us to continue are one twenty-two, Board of Selectmen, two-ten Police Department, two-fifteen Communications Department, two-twenty Fire Department, two-thirty-one Ambulance Services, three-hundred Education, specifically Dayton-Rohoboth Regional School District, five forty-nine ADA Coordinator and six hundred sewer enterprise fund.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do believe we need to settle back on uh, the board, the health agent salary as well.
Okay.
For the health. Um, I think there was just oh, a typographical error or calculation that we need to.
Okay. Which one, five-ten or five-nineteen before we adjourn and fix this now?
Five-ten?
Yep. Okay. And we approved or we voted tonight on the budget, including fifty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-three cents? What should it be, sir?
Mike, do you want me to take this?
Uh, yes, if you could, Chris.
Yeah, so going back to Todd's email from yesterday, hi- his calculation of fifty-five, seven ninety-four seventeen is correct. It's based on thirty-seven fifty-nine an hour at twenty-eight hours times fifty-two and a quarter weeks, plus he gets an eight hundred dollar stipend. That brings it to the total to fifty-five, seven ninety-four seventeen.
So that makes total sense because the difference is eight hundred dollars. So we just forgot, I forgot the education.
No worries. Sorry about that.
No, it's, it's my bad. I made a, so really what we should be revoting on is a total for five-ten of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents, right?
Let me just make that change right now.
No worries. It was the original town administrator recommendation.
That's right.
So they said, the old saying is a bloke, broken clock is right twice a day, Chris.
Yeah, so I have, Brett, my total is sixty-three, seven twenty-one, thirty-three is what you should be voting on.
Okay. Is the board amenable to revoting it with the accurate salary in the education incentive?
On Department five-ten, I'm going to withdraw my second.
Okay.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, and I will entertain new motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Department five-ten Board of Health Regulations and Inspections be approved for FY twenty-two with total budget sixty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And thank you for bringing this to my attention, both town accountant Laviola and our town administrator, Mr. Mullin.
Welcome.
Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Goulart.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. Is there anything else that I'm missing before I entertain motions to adjourn? Is there any public input? Actually, I should ask. I'm sorry. I have my agenda in front of me.
We got an executive session tonight.
Yes.
I thought that was tomorrow night.
No, it's tonight and tomorrow.
Okay, see, I like not having the agenda in front of me. Mike, ready to eat dinner. Okay. Yes. This is Brady.
I don't think you mentioned um, that we would have to revisit the library budget number six-ten of the.
Ah. Yes, thank you so much. Correct. Okay, so we have about seven of them to redo, seven or eight. At this time, I will entertain motions. Um, actually, hold on. Can someone share the agenda on the screen, Mr. Mullin?
I just did, Mr. Chairman. Can you see it?
Oh, no. Oh, no, it's so small.
Oh, one second, I'll zoom.
It's a, if there's no public input on the, on anything, I will make a motion. We go into executive session under Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, small a, three, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may be detrimental, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
I do.
Firefighters' Union grievances, Police Union Grievances, Police Union Negotiations.
And we will not be returning into open session. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Selectman Goulart, your vote.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. I do want to thank everyone for their participation, especially the public. We love getting the questions. We love being held accountable, so thank you so much. A lot of good conversation. I hope everyone has a wonderful night and the good news is you get to see us tomorrow. So I look forward to our meeting tomorrow. Have a wonderful night, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Have a good night.
You too.